Everybody, we're going to get started here, please. Thank you. Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, September 26th. Again, this is a hybrid public meeting, so members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. We have a number of people joining us from both this evening. To join in person, we are at the Norton Public Library at 68 East Main Street. To join the meeting via Zoom, there's a Zoom link available on the meeting agenda, as well as Zoom ID 6389291060. There is also a phone number and a meeting ID available should you wish to join that way. Meeting will also be available on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. For future meetings, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, Town Staff, so your comments can be submitted to the board and read into the record as much as appropriate. So with that out of the way, I will go into our agenda. We do have a few things on our -- we do have bills to look at later, but for now, I'm going to skip that. And we have on our agenda here executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 23a3, to discuss Next Sun Energy v. Fernandez et al., Town of Norton Planning Board, Land Court, Case Number 19, miscellaneous 00023, RBF, as well as Joseph Cavallano et al., the Town of Norton, Land Court, Case 19MASC00322, RBF, as well as Colgan et al. vs. Town of Norton Planning Board, State Court, Number 19MASC00564, RBF. I'll ask anybody who's joining remotely, please mute your line while we're in session if you'd like to speak. I will call on you if you use the reactions function within the Zoom meeting. Okay. I'm going to continue my here. As I've noted in the case numbers noted, because I declare the discussion as an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board and with the board to return to open session. So what that means in English is that the board is going to go into an executive session in a separate meeting room to discuss an agenda item with Town Council. After we complete that executive session, we will return to this room and rejoin the open meeting for everyone else. For everyone in person, that means that we will not be in the room for a little bit. For everybody on Zoom, I apologize that you will have a video of an empty room for a little bit, but that's how it goes. So again, I'll entertain a motion with respect to that. Thank you, Laura, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to move into executive session? Okay. Hearing none, I'll go through the roll, since we do have a member attending virtually. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim? Jim, I apologize, you're muted. If you're
Oh, we're muted, too.
Oh. Okay. So the board has just made a motion to go into executive session. We're going through the roll. Jim, we are looking for a vote from you to go into executive session.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim. And I will vote yes as well. So the board will not move into executive session and will return shortly and continue with the meeting. Thank you. Welcome, everybody back. The board is now back in open session after our executive session here. I know there's a lot of people in the room. I'm going to try and speak to the people here, as well as to the microphone in front of me as best as I can, but just ask that you please allow whoever is presenting the opportunity to speak, so everybody can hear them. So the first item on our public hearing agenda is site plan 482, which is a remand decision for 21 Fairley Lane and 210 Bay Road with the owner applicant Next Sun Energy. This is a remand from Land Court to reconsider specific conditions from a decision from 2019. We are only going to be discussing those conditions related to this decision. The decision at large, anything else related to it, are not part of this remand. So I'll ask if the applicant would like to come forward and present. Yes, please. That'd be perfect. That way you can be on camera and speaking for everybody here.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kate Carter. I represent the applicant, Next Sun Energy LLC. I'm going to make some brief introductory remarks and then turn it over to Ms. Minahan, who will speak about sort of the technicalities of the conditions that have been remanded. Again, as this planning board knows, there has been a site plan decision already issued for this project approving the project subject to 64 separate conditions. That decision was issued in October of 2019. The case has then been tried by the Land Court. There was a trial in May of 2022, and a decision that the -- let me just pause. Next Sun appealed certain of the conditions that were imposed on the site plan. That appeal, together with a companion case filed by certain neighbors appealing the site plan decision as a whole and the approval of the project as a whole, were tried to the Land Court in May of 2022. And the Land Court issued its decision most recently on all of those cases. There were three cases in total in May of 2023 this year. The final judgment is currently under appeal, but that judgment upheld the site plan decision but for four conditions. It entered judgment in Next Sun's favor, upholding the site plan decision except for four conditions. Those are conditions 16, 19, 49, and 56. So those are the only four conditions that have been remanded back to this board with specific instructions that were included in the judgment that the court issued and the amended judgment that the court issued. So the court helpfully laid some ground rules in terms of the scope of what can be considered on remand for those four conditions. And Ms. Minahan, when she comments on sort of the technical aspects of what Next Sun's requesting or proposing as part of its remand, she'll discuss sort of the limitations that have been addressed. But what is important, and which I think the chairman also mentioned, is that the court has not remanded this matter back to redebate the amount of decommissioning bond, the location of the energy storage system that's associated with the project, the number of allowed battery energy storage containers, or to try and relitigate any other conditions that have already been upheld in the site plan decision. So the scope of tonight's remand decision is quite narrow. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Minahan to comment.
Good evening, board. Stacy Minahan, I am a professional wetland scientist in principle with Beals &amp; Thomas. I did bring boards with me. I know that the scope is very narrow, but also recognizing that many of the board members were not present during the original permitting process. If it would be helpful, I'm happy to give an overview of the project before jumping into the conditions. I'll defer to the board on your preference.
I think we've talked about it. We just talked about executive session a little bit. It may be helpful just to have them up for reference.
Okay.
Especially as we talk about conditions 19 and 56.
Okay.
And maybe 49, too.
Okay, but I will forego kind of my overview of the project. Where would you like the stand to be for best viewing for all?
How about right there and facing the audience?
Okay. All right, thank you. So I'll pause after each condition as well, because they do cover different topics to take in questions from the board or discussion. But, you know, please stop me as I'm going along if you have questions as well. So the first condition that was remanded is condition 16. It addresses the decommissioning approach, and the court remanded this condition back to the board solely to examine how to secure Next Sun's decommissioning obligation. So as the board knows, the security only comes into play if Next Sun were not able to decommission the project when it comes to that. The board in the site plan decision had required a cash escrow. It's coming from outside the room. Would you like me to shut it?
I can't shut the door. Open meeting locked.
Oh. No, it's not.
Do you want to check that? I don't know if it'll come across on the TV or not.
Keep going. Okay. So what the court remanded was that the bond amount, I'm sorry, the security amount be posted as a bond instead of as a cash escrow. That's similar to what the board had required in another condition regarding landscaping, where that was a bond surety. That bond provides the town with security that money will be available to decommission if, in the event arises where Next Sun or its successor is no longer able to decommission it, but it also is in a way that is tenable financially for the applicant.
I'm going to try and remember four years ago. I believe that that was something that Yeah, we've done bonds in other projects. We've done bonds without the price of this project. If you're going to ask me why we did cash bond on this four years ago, I probably couldn't tell you.
And I similarly do not remember.
Yeah. The court is asked to consider a bond instrument. So does the board have any? We can, if we have no questions on that, we may talk about it later, but I'm not seeing any hands raised here.
So the next two conditions, 19 and 56, relate to groundwater. The court has indicated that both conditions are to be redrafted, because the purpose for which they were originally proposed has been altered by the court's judgment, and I'll go through that in a little bit of detail. So condition 19 related to pre-construction conditions. And as originally drafted, the condition was interested in protecting abutting properties from the project's purported impact on the quantity of water in private wells. That condition obligated Next Sun to hire a geotechnical engineer who would prepare a study about baseline conditions, and the court's amended judgment concluded that conditions related to the project's impact on well water quantity must be annulled. So conditions 19 and 56 should be redrafted to eliminate references to water quantity. Those conditions, and along those lines, because it's related to quality, a geotechnical report is not relevant to remaining portion of the conditions. So the remaining portions of conditions 19 and 56 related to water quality, and they addressed baseline water quality monitoring, as well as subsequent water quality monitoring. The court's findings at trial concluded that the project only posed a risk to groundwater in the event of a fire in the battery energy storage system. So whereas the original conditions required annual monitoring post-construction, the court has concluded that the only risk is if there is a fire in the battery energy storage system, and therefore, monitoring should only be required if there is a fire at the battery energy storage system. The
And just to restate, and that statement there, that's a decision that the Land Court has made based on testimony at trial?
Yes. Yes, there were various experts that testified in the matter, and that was the Land Court's decision. The other aspect of the conditions related to the distance, the extent of wells that should be tested, the original condition referenced, I believe, a butters to a butters within 300 feet of the property line, which is not a relevant standard, given that the proposed, or the potential risk from a potential future fire would be limited to this portion where the battery energy storage system is. And so Next Sun is recommending a 500-foot radius, wells within 500 feet of the battery energy storage system, should there be a fire event be tested for potable, the standard suite of metals for potable water supply.
Would you like questions at this time, or would you like us to go through them and then come back to the whole set of conditions?
Whatever the board pleases.
Okay. I know I have a couple of questions relating to these conditions. I got a couple. So the proposal from Next Sun is to limit it to distance from the battery energy storage system.
Right.
Now, that system is being put on dry land, but right next to a cranberry bog, which is essentially a lake with plants growing in it, correct?
I would not characterize it as a lake with plants, but yes, there is a water control system through the cranberry bog, and it is flooded at different times throughout the year.
So would, again, I am not an engineer. I am a volunteer member of a town board from a, if there is a fire event, and in whatever scenario that does, thinking about the contamination, like food coloring in a glass of water. If it is right next to a large glass of water, is there, the original standard of a butters with a butters within 300 feet was designed to capture all of the abutting properties and the potential for contamination in that water area? Is it, is there evidence, or is there some kind of engineering basis to show that chemicals wouldn't be released into the water and then spread downstream?
Yes. Yep, I understand your question. So this was also testified to at trial, and included in the board's materials that were provided for this remand was information from Next Sun's expert relating to this. So the battery energy storage system itself is in a container that has its own fire suppression and containment system. So this potential contamination, if there is a fire, would occur from water putting out the fire if it comes out of that containment system. So it's an if, if it leaves the containment system to start. If it leaves the containment system, and if there were a fire, it's an automatic alarm and trigger with a notification. So the 500-foot radius is based on Mass. DEP's approach when there is a release of oil or hazardous material, which would be regulated under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. And those releases, as you may know, typically are not found right when they happen. They're found years after or decades after, and DEP tests or has testing done within a 500, in wells within a 500-foot radius of the release once it's found. Where this release will be known right away is already in containment. The expert had actually recommended a smaller radius, a 300-foot radius of wells from the battery energy storage. Next Sun is proposing 500 feet, and also that if there were to be a fire with a release, it would be regulated under the Mass. Contingency Plan with a licensed site professional involved as well.
And with that contingency plan, if they test at 500 feet and they're still getting positives, how far do they extend?
So I'm not familiar with the Mass. Contingency Plan to answer that. I think it depends on the constituents. But I believe that if we were, if there was testing and something was found from that, from that potential event, then we propose to test within an additional, wells within an additional 500 feet of that, of the positive result.
In theory, it's far down that chain of dominos.
And at that point, the licensed site professional would be taking over what the protocol needs to be to comply.
Okay. And do you have, you said that there was testimony as to the containment and that, do you have a reference to that in the materials that we have?
I believe that the
I know I'm the only member of the board who was there with the original decision, and I know that the stack of papers that we have is probably about this if we printed it out, so.
I do believe that the water quality, was it Mabit that was the expert on that, Kate? I thought they did reference that there was a containment system and an alarm trigger. It's not to the extent of the materials that were submitted during the original board hearing, but I believe it was addressed at trial as well.
Mr. Chairman, if you look in footnote six to the September 19th, 2023 filing that Next Sun submitted, we cite to the tab seven is referencing the alarm system that would be triggered in the event of a fire inside the battery energy storage system, which would then trigger an immediate response from the Norton Fire Department. And so that is highlighted testimony that was given at trial.
I'm less focused on the alarm bringing the fire department, what happens with the chemicals when all of that is, once the firefighting is begun, I think is the
So just to comment on that quickly. So the protocol that's been provided for Next Sun through its fire safety consultant is that, and I think that's consistent with also what the testimony was provided by the plaintiff's consultant, is the way that you put out a fire in an energy storage system is you simply apply water, a lot of water, but it's only water. So our protocol in the event of a fire in the energy storage system would just be to apply water. There's no chemicals being applied. That's both inside the container through a tube and also on top of the container. So the expectation
But there's a whole bunch of chemical reactions going on at the same time.
Correct, right. So the expectation is that it would remain in, but in the event that it were to escape, then this would trigger a response and a containment and testing as we proposed in this condition.
So it's a container with one-way valves, essentially?
Yes.
So it lets the water in, but it keeps everything inside that you pump it to?
Yeah.
That's the design?
They're largely like shipping containers, and there's a feed pipe to which water gets put in in the event. They're also sprinkled inside the container itself, so water is being released inside, and then additional water is fed in through this pipe.
Okay.
There's, I don't have the testimony describing that specific containment, but we can certainly supplement with testimony from trial if that's helpful.
Sure. Yeah, just to, thank you.
I was just reading tab nine, which is the summary report that was submitted with it, because that's where I thought I remembered, not a detailed description of it, but reference to the containment being. I can't really put my finger on it.
Yes. Okay. So with that, all related to the specific conditions to water, understanding that the applicant has offered to provide further detail for us to check. Any further questions for the applicant on these specific conditions?
And you kind of took what I was thinking about the containment. If there is a suppression and we have to use a certain amount of water, where is it going? How is it going to be moved offsite? Is it going to be put into the soil? Will it be leached? Does the site have enough water? Are the containers big enough to hold the amount of water needed to put out the fires? Can the fire go through the container at any point? Does it? How strong are the containers? Like, there's a lot involved about
So those items, yep, were discussed during the original permit process and are not subject to this remand. I would answer them if I knew the answers to those questions off the top of my head, and I'm sure we can provide information. But the question, I suppose, is this condition presumes that there could be a fire and a release. Well, the original condition just required annual monitoring regardless of any release. The remand talks about monitoring in association with a potential release. And so, you know, the containment system and what happens with the water for this condition is almost a moot point, because your condition is assuming that there has been a release, and what, who should be tested, which wells, you know, what's the radius and what should be tested for. And so on those points, we're proposing the standard potable suite of metals that are tested for in wells and the 500-foot radius, which is greater than what the expert had recommended.
As far as testing also, if there's a fire anywhere else with any other component here, just say out in the field somewhere, does that area subject to testing and everything, too?
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the decision referred only to fire in the battery storage system.
Correct.
So
So a fire anywhere else would not be subject to testing?
Correct.
Just to respond to some of your questions, so conditions 30 through 48 discuss the various responsibilities that Next Sun will have prior to the construction, prior to interconnection, including coming up with an emergency contingency plan, training for the Norton Fire Department, confirming adequacy of supply of water. But again, those conditions are not subject to remand. Those are already implemented in the site plan. The question is addressing specifically, revising specifically any conditions, or reference in 19 and 56 to testing for baseline conditions or post-fire conditions related to impacts on quantity of water, which the court has ordered to be struck. And also this annual monitoring requirement that's untethered to an event of a fire in the energy storage system. The court did find, and we cited to in our materials, that there was no evidence presented at trial that there was a risk to groundwater from any other components of the project, including galvanized steel posts or the panels themselves. So there is a citation to that in our submitted materials.
And I think, Steve, to your point, any event of a fire and post, if testing is involved, is the post-fire event, is there a playbook that you, is available in our materials? Or is that something that's not, has not been formally created yet?
In terms of what would be done if there was a fire? So a licensed site professional would be brought on and would oversee the release kind of after that immediate notification to the fire and the fighting of, to the fire department and the fighting of the fire itself. And then for the monitoring, like I said, we're proposing the suite of eight, so that's in there, and the wells within 500 feet of the battery energy storage.
But, Mr. Chairman, when you say a playbook, yes, conditions 30 through 48 include the development of a plan that would address what were to happen in the event of a fire, beyond just the testing protocol that we're discussing tonight at the remand.
Thank you. Okay. Laura, yes?
From Ms. Minahan, please. If we were to assume harvest season of the cranberry bog, and there was a fire in the ESS system, can we assume a contamination that would exceed 500 feet?
No, I'm not sure I follow the question. So whether these bogs are flooded or not flooded is maybe what you're driving at? The fire protocol in the energy storage system and the potential for release does not change. Even when these bogs are not flooded, there are, you know, perimeter ditches and water systems that drive through this. So the court's consideration and the expert testimony regarding the potential for contamination from the battery energy storage system would have, you know, considered this as a cranberry bog system that's, you know, has flows of water or ponding at different times. I will also note, although it looks quite proximate on this area, the battery energy storage system is not immediately adjacent to the cranberry bog itself. It is within an existing upland disturbed area and across from a dike road from the cranberry bogs.
Using that 500-foot buffer, how many wells over the 500 feet, how many properties does that touch?
So we did submit an exhibit that shows the 500-foot radius, and I did plot it for tonight. This exhibit shows the properties. I don't know where the individual wells are on these properties. This is the battery energy storage system, and this is the 500-foot radius, so it's really just this portion.
I'm seeing
Two, three. No, two. Two, three. No, two.
Okay.
But I believe, Mr. Chair, if I may answer. I believe that it actually only includes one well that's within 500 feet ra, foot radius, even notwithstanding the fact, given the location. So the property that is encompassed is under joint ownership. It's where the Blueview Nurseries are and where Mr. Cogliano's home is. And I believe that there is one well within that 500-foot radius.
Okay. Understanding that we may come back to this, any further questions for the applicant at this time? One more condition.
One more condition, 49, which relates to sound. So the court mandated condition number 49 because it needs a standard for the measurement of sound that is measurable and attainable. So currently, condition number 49 precludes the project from generating any noise that is perceptible at the property line. And the court had issue with the term perceptible because it is neither measurable nor necessarily attainable. So Nexon commissioned Acentec to produce a supplemental report in connection with this remand hearing, which is included in your materials, to make a recommendation on what a measurable, attainable noise standard that would still meet the original conditions objective of protecting abutting properties from increases in noise that would arise from the project. Norton does not have its own noise ordinance. Other Massachusetts municipalities, including those in communities similar to Norton, have adopted a fixed standard for noise that apply on a townwide basis. That approach can be less conservative than what the Mast EP noise standard is, which I'm going to run through in a moment. Acentec recommended adopting the Mast EP standards to measure noise pollution. The DEP standard is responsive to particular site characteristics. So whereas some other communities use a fixed standard, DEPs measures increases above ambient for both daytime and nighttime. So it takes into account existing site characteristics as opposed to a fixed standard. DEP allows an increase in sound levels by 10 dBa at the property line over existing background levels during both day and nighttime hours. So you have to measure ambient at night, can't increase more than 10 and same for the day. So for that reason, it's not a one-size-fits-all standard and is appropriate for this site. Nexon had also commissioned Acentec to confirm whether the project met the DEP noise standard and if not, to suggest mitigation. Sound generated by the project was within acceptable levels at all residences along Bay Road. Sound generated by the project exceeded the DEP 10 dBa standard at one location, the shared property line with Blueview Nurseries. So along here. Accordingly, Nexon has proposed a sound barrier to be constructed along three sides of the battery energy storage system. And with that proposed, and actually the noise generating equipment, I should say, with that proposed mitigation, sound will continue to be below the standard at the residences and it will only increase by eight dBa above existing background levels at that shared property line with Blueview Nurseries. So that noise measurement will protect public health, safety, and welfare.
And that new number, that's also with a reduction in the amount of equipment on the site, correct?
The reduction, well, the, it's not a new number in terms of reducing the equipment. The equipment reduction was unrelated to the noise. Maybe it was not done because of the need to reduce noise?
Okay.
That's your question?
Okay.
So again, the DEP standard is 10 dBa. Nexon is proposing an eight dBa measurement above ambient daytime and nighttime.
And that your proposal adds to property line, correct?
At the property line, yes. So it's worth noting that obviously the residences themselves are farther from the property line. So there is no impact at the residences, but we're proposing it at the property line in accordance with the DEP standard.
Whether or not it's within, yeah, the property is the property. Whether or not it's within a house or not is the property?
Yep.
Okay. Let me see, I know I had some notes on that condition, so let me make sure. Sorry, if, just for, as a reminder, if you're joining the meeting remotely, please mute your line if you're not presenting. Thank you. Let me see here, so the, that's the, so the measurement is at that shared property line, which is the closest property line? And that's where you are projecting the eight dBa above ambient, correct?
With the mitigation incorporated, yes.
And just to, to restate, I think the inverters are the primary noise generating piece of equipment, correct? And they are essentially what is responsible for turning DC energy in the battery stor, energy storage system into AC energy for the grid.
I believe so.
And they would be running after sundown because we would be generating electricity during the day, storing it and then feeding it to the grid in the evening, correct? I believe that was the original intention of the battery energy storage system.
The Acentec study contemplates that the inverters would not be running after 8 p.m. I know there was a suggestion in some of the public comment materials that they have to run because the sun is up. That is not the case. They can be programmed and at 8 p.m. And that's what the modeling has, had, was, was premised on.
Okay, I do not, I do not believe that that is something that was originally proposed by Nexon with the original submittal because we were worried about inverters running all the way through the night. And I don't believe that we have any conditions relating to our operations currently in the site plan.
I believe there may be, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure. We do have, the site plan is a tab and I can review it while we're, while the discussion is ongoing. I think there is a condition currently as to hours. But if the board were to adopt the standard that says that it's eight dBa at the property line and Nexon is then generating, Nexon's model is premise on it turning off its inverters at 8 p.m. and lo and behold, it ends up not doing that and is in violation, that would be within the planning board's purview to say, you're in violation of your site plan condition and it certainly wouldn't be in Nexon's interest to do so. So the standard of adopting an eight dBa standard over ambient background level at the property line then is enforceable and self-polices the hours of operation. Nexon has to make sure that it complies and that includes the hours of operation, the mitigation that it's going to impose, the location of chillers, what have you. It needs to make sure that its project complies with that standard so as not to violate it.
So just to confirm, if you're suggesting that when this condition is revised, that we incorporate the, that the model assumes that the inverters stop running at 8 p.m.?
No, what I'm saying is, Mr. Chairman, that by adopting the model that we've proposed, which is eight dBa at the property line, no more than that, that Nexon has to conform its operations, whether that's a reduction in the number of inverters, whether it's the location of the chillers, whether it's the hours of operation. It has to make sure that it's operating so that at no time is it more than eight dBa at the property line.
But if you're running at nine o'clock at seven dBa above ambient, that's the condition that...
Well, the condition, the, the court sent it back to be measurable and attainable, right? And it said that perceptible at the property line was not, was neither a measurable nor attainable standard. And so what we're proposing is something that says measurable, a metric eight dBa over background ambient levels at the property line. And then the operational piece, which is not previously discussed in this condition, and so we would suggest it should not be discussed in this condition, has to be dictated by our need to comply with that standard. We have to make sure our operations comply, so the eight dBa should be self-policing as to that.
So I'm, I apologize, I'm getting into semantics here. But you're suggesting that in the modeling assumes the inverters stop at eight, eight p.m. Absent, looking at the operational side of that, we have no way of enforcing that?
If I can, sure, please. The sound is measurable. And so if it's measured above eight dBa, whether it's at seven p.m. or 10 p.m.
The, the suggestion that I thought I had, that I picked up from, I apologize, I forget your last name.
Carter.
Carter, was that the model assumes the inverters stop running at 8 p.m. and that's what we would be able to take from operational standpoint. If that's what I'm hearing in subsequent is eight, eight dBa and it could run however long it runs. So if we can, if there is a condition in the original decision speaking to hours of operation, that would be great. If there's not, then we need, then the board in identifying a measurable standard needs to assume, can't assume eight p.m. is a stopping point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, Amy Quessel, Town Council, it's condition number 55, Mr. Chairman, which was not, which was not challenged by Nexon, which states that hours of operation are 24 hours, seven days a week.
Yes, exactly. So we are, so whatever standard that we are adopting, because we're only adopting a measurable standard, needs to account for the entire hours of operation.
Yes.
So...
Right. And, and, but by adopting that eight dBa, if a 24 hours, seven days a week doesn't comport with that eight dBa at certain times of the night, then regardless of, correct me if I'm wrong, since I'm not an attorney, but regardless of that condition, you also still have to meet the eight dBa. So the eight dBa was ruled.
But it would be a potential, I don't anticipate staying in the middle of the field at nine o'clock at night with a decibel meter. So that's the challenge. But understood. I apologize if I went way too in the weeds for other members of the board.
Important. I, I would, I would say the, the measurement, because it's eight decibels over whatever the ambient noise is, I, I suppose we'd have to figure out, one, what the level of ambient noise is throughout that time period.
That's what they did a study on, yes.
And beyond, beyond that, when during the year that study was done. During the winter, when there's snow on the ground, sound travels more.
So, Mr. Chairman, the site plan condition already obligates us. Condition number 18 already obligates Nexon to perform a ambient level study during the months of November to March. There was some suggestion that the Acentec study on which this modeling was based was not performed during those months. That is true. It wasn't. It was performed in connection with a prep, a, a trial preparation. But that does not mean that Nexon does not need to have its acoustics engineer come out and perform a baseline ambient level sound survey that would be between the months of November and March, as is stated already in condition 18. And condition 18 has not been remanded. And I believe that is also subject to peer review that Nexon would pay for to confirm the, the results of that.
Because I am not an acoustic engineer, so thank you. Yeah, okay. So just to, so the original condition, which the court sent back, was no perceptible noise at the property line. The proposal from Nexon is a study of ambient noise levels and then nothing above eight dBa above that throughout the day and the evening. So as ambient noise changes, it needs to stay below plus eight.
Could I ask another question? The ambient noise levels, does that include the operations of the cranberry bog itself? Does that include farm equipment? Was that taken into account when ambient noise levels were happening?
If, if the studies between November and March, then probably not.
Okay, okay. Fair enough.
I don't know what you mean with cranberries between November and March.
I guess the other one was how perceptible is eight decibels on its own?
I just actually Googled that. Sounds from 10 to 20 decibels are very quiet and safe for your ears. These sounds are slightly louder than the sound of your breath, which is 10 decibels or the equivalent of a quiet whisper or the wind blowing over the beach.
Constantly.
Constantly, yeah.
So me whispering isn't that, isn't that loud, but if I was whispering constantly...
Through the night?
Yeah.
It's just... Just to address, again, the, the purpose of condition number 56 in particular, 49, sorry.
56 is, they go a little over, yes.
Yes, I apologize. So the purpose of condition 49 is to address impacts on abutting properties in the interest of the public safety, health, and welfare. And just for context, the Acentec modeling shows that with the mitigation, the sound of the, that the project, the project's impact on sound at the residence levels, so we're talking about just at the shared property line. At the residence levels, the closest residence is more than 800 feet further from the shared property line. So more than 900 feet from the source of the sound. At, with the mitigation, project, the noise generated by the project is actually below background ambient levels at the closest residence and then obviously would dissipate as you move further away from the battery energy storage. And again, where we're talking about protecting these conditions as, as stated by the court, they need to be reasonably tailored to regulate for the public health, safety, and welfare. There was testimony and evidence presented at trial that this location at the rear of the Blueview Nurseries property, it's elevated approximately 20 feet above the project site. It's vegetated, thickly vegetated. It's used for storage of remnant trees and remnant plants that are no longer being sold by the nursery and other discarded vehicles that are not being operated. So the public interests are heightened as you get closer to Bay Road where there are residences and less so, such that eight dBa at the property line has less impact on public health, safety, and welfare than it does where it's below background ambient levels closer to Bay Road.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions on the sound condition for the applicant at this time? Okay. Ms. Minahan, if you don't mind, I was going to ask Mr. Cogliano if you'd like to speak. Mr. Cogliano, would you like to come forward and...
I would.
Okay. If you can come up to the podium, we will, we'll be here. So, Mr. Cogliano, as you've been involved in this for the last four years, I'll ask you to just state your name and address for the record, please. And I think we've gone through this a couple of times, but we're only talking about the four conditions that we've talked about so far this evening.
Joe Cogliano, 202 Bay Road. Nice to see everybody again. Let me first address some of the points that have been made here. There was a point made regarding, what was it? Sorry. The amount of the bond is not part of the remand.
That, that is also what our town council has told us, yes.
Right. I, I believe that, but I believe she told you that. I don't agree with that. I think that it's within the condition and since a surety agreement is going to be needed for a bond, that at this point, if we're dealing with each other in good faith, and I mean you and I, because I know you and I are always dealing with each other in good faith, but if we're dealing with each other in good faith and an issue has been exposed, and this just happened, I just saw this peer review, it's 20 days old, which then prompted me to look at the methodology used by the National Energy Resource Laboratory. You know, I wouldn't have a problem with that number if it was 10%, 20%, even 50%. We're talking about a 400% difference. We're talking about a four hundred percent difference on an issue that's going to impact this town at the decommissioning. So I guess the question for the town council would be, what should we do about this? Well, the question would be, what do we do about this? What do we do about, let's put it this way. If the, if this project happens, and that's, we don't even know if that's going to happen yet, but if this project happens, right now, because it was reduced inside, there's possibly two million dollars in income possibly, and that depends on other variables like how much sun there is and how much energy is produced. You're talking about a surety that should be the same amount, two million dollars. So, look, I'm not trying to make your life tough, I'm just saying to you, there's a problem here. What do we do about it?
It's the opinion of town council that the amount of the bond is not something that is part of the remand, so it's not something that we're prepared to open up.
Let me.
Obviously, this is something, I would say, outside of that, this is probably something that town managers should think about.
Well, as Ricky Ricardo, Lucille Ball said, Ricky, you've got some explaining to do.
No, Ricky said that.
Actually, Ricky said it.
Before my time, sorry.
Well, let's go on to the next one. Location of the ESS, that was also mentioned as not being in the remand. It is in the remand from the standpoint of attainability. The court said that the set standard has to be measurable and attainable. He didn't say how it's attainable. And so we'll go into a little more depth later on about what could be done to make it attainable, that wouldn't cause much pain.
To a point, I would, I'll head you off a little bit at the pass there and say, I think that if, if this board were to suggest a measurable and attainable standard which was unreasonable, then that would be probably challenged in court again.
The ones that I'm going to talk about, I don't think are unreasonable or unattainable. The third point, before we get to the battery situation, is that the quantity of wells is supposed to be annulled from these conditions. Now, my understanding in reading the judge's decisions is that the quantity of private wells, not the water, not the quantity of water related to the project site. There was testimony given at the trial about how important it was to determine the quantity of water at the project site. You have to know how much water is available to deal with this kind of a problem, you know? That's a key thing. And then you've got to figure out how much water does it, you know, does it take to deal with it, and how much water is available to deal with it? So my reading of this is not that the judge said the quantity of the project site should not be determined. He said that you can only determine the quantity of the private wells if there's a fire in the ESS. So in regards to the private wells, I think that comment was correct, but not in regards to the quantity from wells at the project site.
Okay. That is your interpretation, yes.
Yep. All right, so let's talk now about the battery. So the problem with the battery storage system is that all these safety systems are put into place to make you feel good. The problem is, they can't eliminate the risk of what happens. Now, the only battery expert to testify, who was actually a battery expert, the other gentleman was a fireman who took literally a one-hour course in Love Home Iron Batteries three days, three weeks before the trial, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. The only actual expert testified that it was likely that there would be a fire in this system, based upon the number of fires that had occurred around the world. He testified, because no details were provided, it was not possible to do a hazard and mitigation analysis, to even know the extent of what would happen, which is one of the reasons why the five hundred foot, I don't know where that went.
It's on the opposite side of the board. Do you mind if we flip over?
Right. So we're talking about here, a five hundred foot radius. Now you see, here's your five hundred foot radius. This is where my number three well is. This is where my number two well is. This doesn't even cover the two wells that were part of the trial. And what were one of the findings of fact in the trial? The judge determined that this was conservative, that this could go much further beyond what was shown for trial. Now, if we haven't done a hazard and mitigation analysis, we don't know what we don't know. Where are we? We're in a well protection zone. We're in an ACEC, we're in an aquifer, we're in a floodplain. What's going on here? We have to take extra care. We have to be extra protective. So, so what's the point here? Again, you know, these safety things, they sound nice, but they don't work. For example, this system uses an aerosol. Our expert testified that aerosols don't work for this type of situation, but they use some type of an aerosol. They talk about containing, they're going to pump water into the container? The whole point of this is, is that these things actually burn underwater. There's no way to stop them once it starts. That's why it's called thermal runaway, and it can happen for a bunch of different reasons. It takes thousands, the testimony was thousands of gallons of water to deal with these things. Can't put it out, it's just to try to contain, try to cool it as best as you can. So, so then what happens? Let's assume that this occurs, there's a likely probability that it is going to occur, the numbers that I've seen is somewhere between eight and sixteen years, there should be a probable event here, this is potentially a thirty-year project. Well, let's be practical. What's going to happen? If this thing goes on fire or explodes, the fire department is going to come, whether it's from a bell or whistle or whatever the system is. If you're a good chief of the fire department, what are you going to say? This thing is generating hydrofluoric acid when you put water on it. I'm not going to tell my men to go up to that, I'm going to say, let's just keep throwing water on it, try to cool it as best we can, see if we can keep it from expanding, and then we're going to let it burn out, because that's really all you can do, is let the thing burn out. Well, what happens? If you're dealing with tens of thousands of gallons of water, contaminated water, where's that going? It's going into the ground. What's this soil like that their expert and our expert testified? It's porous, goes right down to the groundwater. Then where does it go? Well, let's see. We've got the Mulberry Meadow Brook over here, that the water runs south, we have town wells to the south of us, we have the superintendent of water saying that because this is a zone two, it can't impact the zone one? No, I mean, we have to deal with the issues today, I realize that, we can't stop the project tonight, we have to just deal with what the conditions are in front of us, but, you know, it just doesn't make sense. Anyway, so it's going to impact the groundwater if the thermal runaway event occurs and water's applied to it. In terms of, you know, whose wells do we look at? Both experts, their expert and my expert testified that if this happens, it's likely that this area is going to have to be evacuated. How far is that going to go? We really don't know, because the thing hasn't been analyzed, because the hazard and mitigation analysis hasn't been done properly. So what do, you know, what should we do? If you were a butter, what would you want? What kind of testing would you want? How much care would you want applied to this problem? Now, there was a comment made about the height of the, of the area here. Let me see, where are we? Over here, this height. In this area, it's about fifteen feet. Generally, the sloping of that property starts at one point, I think, at twenty feet, but then it goes down literally to the bog level as you continue down south. So one of the things that was, was mentioned, that in this area back here, there is some old plant material that's too big to sell, that's correct. There are some trucks that my nephew, he's a mechanic, he loves that kind of stuff, so he thinks those engines are better than the ones I make today, so he's saving those. And there's some other materials that we use as part of our operation. What happens if this is ever developed? You've got this thing fifty-eight feet from the, from the property line. So you're basically saying, I can't do anything with this for thirty years, because it's a thirty-year project. Whereas we heard, you know, from the opposition, that it's not as important because it's not a residence. The impact to society is important, or whatever was said. But it is important. So, let me see.
I would say, it's an understanding that existing conditions are important, but they are not intended to be forever conditions.
Yeah. Well, Cho's other has already brought up, okay. So now let me, I'll try not to be repetitive regarding the information that I sent you. I hope you enjoyed that. Were there any questions on that before I continue? Anything you'd like to know? I tried to make it easier, because it's a pain to read all that stuff, so I tried to break it down, so they'd be easy to follow. Okay, so I won't talk about then the surety. We'll say a prayer, hopefully that gets resolved some point, at some point. Regarding the noise, one of my favorites. The report claims, in fact, Tim, you brought this up, there's a problem here regarding the nighttime issue. Aside from the fact that the site plan does say, the site plan decision does say that the project can be operated twenty-four, seven, seventies a week, there's a little caveat in there regarding noise and some other things, that it can't be offensive. But putting aside the fact that most people consider night to start at six PM, this analysis viewed it as though it was, the day ended at eight PM. You know, I think most people think that the day ends at six PM. The previous board was also concerned with the batteries operating at night. Nexon claims the systems will not operate past eight PM, but the sun in the summer can go past eight PM. Now, here's the key problem that I'm having. Originally, this project was eight containers of batteries, and then it went to four. Now, it went to four in approximately the summer of twenty-twenty-one, when this study was being done, because I'm quite sure, this wasn't admitted to, but I'm quite sure it's because they couldn't get the project under the DEP limit without removing four containers of batteries. The claim was that the batteries are more efficient today, but I didn't see that represented in the amount of energy that the batteries can distribute, so I tend to doubt that, but you know, I like to give people the benefit of the doubt. So the four battery containers are three megawatt hours each, or twelve megawatt hours with a two megawatt inverter system. So the funnel is a two megawatt inverter system, but we've got twelve megawatt of hours of batteries. Now, it appears to me, I'm not an engineer, but I can do math, it appears to me that depending upon how the system is set up, the batteries could operate for six hours, right? Twelve divided by two is six, was meaning that they could run past eight. Now, you know, maybe they can set up the inverters so it works somehow differently, but that seems that way to me, so I'd need somebody to show me that that wasn't the case. Now, here's the problem. If the batteries are working, the inverter is working. That's the largest, loudest component. So this report does take into account inverters running at night. The problem with that is if the inverters are still working at night, then even with the acoustic barriers, the system is above the DEP limit. Because it's at forty-two.
From, just, from what I recall, is that the system would only be generating peak power at high noon in the summer. And that's when it's balanced with the grid, basically. And other times, it's building up, and then it's feeding the grid, so it's feeding at, once the sun started to go down, you're not getting the full sun. The system was designed to pump two megawatts as long as it could. So if it was only generating one, it'd be siphoning another one from the battery. See, when, sun goes down, your six hours starts, it'd be kind of a phased fill-up.
Sure. I know the sun isn't, isn't the same strength all day long, but.
But I don't think, I don't, so I don't think you're going to go six hours after sundown.
Let me.
I don't think you're going to go twenty minutes after sundown either.
Let me say this to you.
And it'll be different based on the time of the year.
The system is a four megawatt system. The inverters are two megawatts. That was done in part to charge the batteries, so that the batteries would be at full power at all times. In fact, the judge even found that the purpose of the batteries was to extend the system, improve the grid. He claimed twenty-four hours, that's not in the evidence, but he came up with that. So I hear what you're saying, I buy that the sun is.
In terms of, if it stops, I don't know.
But also remember, these panels move with the sun. These aren't your typical solar panels. But I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. When it stops, I don't know.
I've heard that before when it was going up, when it stops, I don't know, I don't know what that game was. The court has stated, nothing precludes the board from requiring that Nexon adhere to a standard that the town sees fit to protect the health, safety, or welfare. The court is stating that the town can have a stronger standard than the mass DEP noise regs, or a lower DB over ambient than ten. Now, Nexon is proposing eight. They claim that the DEP limit is the standard for health, safety, and welfare. The problem is that the DEP standard does not comply with the intent of the original condition, which was, the noise threshold shall not be perceptible above background levels at the property line, which I recall was set in part because of the board's concern about complaints from residents about inverted noise with other solar systems in town. What I have proposed here is a three DBA standard, most, more closely, which follows the intent of the planning board condition. The court has found that Nexon can create its own standard to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. This level is considered a just noticeable difference. This is an industry standard, industry rule of thumb, at which most people won't notice the difference in sound. So that gets the town to what the original intent was, without a zero DBA, which would be really hard to get, because then you have to go even lower than that to get to that. So that solves the, you know, the intent problem. Now the question becomes, how do we attain that? Well, the, probably the easiest way to do it is to move the battery equipment area to the original location. Now, that's a thousand feet from the nearest of butter, instead of fifty-eight feet. And that also helps with the problem that I would have, you know, with the potential development of this down the road, because it wouldn't be there anymore. It'd be over here, somewhere up here near eastern, up around this way, I think. So, you know, the question is, the site plan approved the, this, in this area, the court has approved that site plan, that doesn't mean that in terms of trying to attain that standard, that this couldn't be moved, because that's a way to attain that. That's one aspect.
The applicant could certainly submit a site plan modification if they so choose.
Okay. Second one would be, remove more battery containers. Fewer chillers and less inverter time. Now, the DOER may require battery energy storage for systems over five hundred kilowatts. That doesn't take into consideration exceptions, a good cause exception, which I think being in this area would be a good cause exception, or grandfathering, which Nexon claims they already have their permits, I'm not sure about that, but they claim that they do, and I think the grandfathering was, was in twenty-twenty-one, if I'm not mistaken. So even if they need to do batteries, what do they need for batteries? Twenty-five percent of the energy generated, roughly four megawatt project, twenty-five percent is one, they needed to do it for two hours. What's that? That's one container. So even if they claim they have to do the batteries, all they have to do is one container of batteries, not three. So that would lower your noise. Another one, if you simply move the battery equipment area, actually, it looks like you might not be able to here, if you could move it fifty-eight more feet, which part of it would be here, that gives you six more DBA. That reduces it by six. Now, maybe you can't move it, maybe you can't move it fifty-eight, maybe you can move it twenty. Finally, nobody has explored, as far as I know, whether you could use noise controls on the equipment, like the inverters and the coolers, to reduce noise at the source, rather than putting a barrier around it. So right now, what they're doing is they're putting barriers around the area that's creating noise. What if, instead, you look at what can be done to actually quiet the noise of the systems? Maybe it's, an inverter is quieter, you know, as an example.
I will say, I'm not going to design an electrical system. If we create a standard, then I'm assuming that the applicant will do what they need to do to meet it. That's.
Right, I don't expect you to design an electrical system. What I'm trying to show you is that three is an attainable goal. It's not, one, it's in line with what, you know, what the intent was of the original, you actually were part of that, the original condition, but two, it's attainable. It's not something that would be difficult, like a zero. Okay, conditions nineteen and fifty-six, water testing and monitoring. Now, I won't go into the findings of fact. I won't go into the findings of fact that you have in some of the material I gave you. You know, they found that, the court found that toxic compounds would be, you know, expressed, including hydrophoric acid, that the diagram of impact would be bigger than what was shown during the trial, if that was possible. Evacuation, we already spoke about. I won't go into the chemicals, you know, the whole layout of the chemicals. That was in the material I gave you. I think it's important to note that no reference of the location of this project was made in the court's decision. It's just not there. He made no mention to where this location was, that it was in an ACEC, an aquifer, a well protection zone. But yet, it requires protection. Now, I provided the, you know, the, the location of the town wells and the comments made by the Super Tunnels Water to show how important that is. In terms of quality testing, quality testing, the battery expert testified, determining the quality of water availability and water usage for the particular hazard was necessary, and in many instances, tens of thousands of gallons of water beneath to cool the battery system. He further testified that in order to determine whether there is an adequacy of water available, he would need an analysis that fully evaluated the quantity of water that might be needed to supply and mechanisms, and whether or not the aforementioned are adequate to meet the total supply. He also testified that he had not yet seen that type of analysis done. Determination of the quantity of water availability at the site and the quality of water required for a fire in the ESS or solar panels is imperative due to the lack of fire hydrants in the area. The fire hydrants in the area are one half mile away in one direction and a mile away in another. So what do we have here on this border? What is, what do they do here? Nursery, trees and shrubs. That stuff burns. Same thing over here. We have pictures of it showing all that tall, all the pine trees. This system burns hot and it burns fast. That's why people die when it happens. They don't have time to get out. This is, in all likelihood, being 58 feet away, I can pretty much guarantee you, it's gonna spread. And if it's gonna spread, there are no fire hydrants. That's where, in my opinion, the court made a mistake. That's when the quantity of water in private wells does matter. Because it's gonna be private wells that are gonna have to deal with that if it spreads. But in any event. Post-construction annual monitoring. Given the sensitive location and significant risk of harm, annual monitoring should be required for the project site. Again.
I'll say, stop you and say that the direction that we have is that the condition is only to be revised to talk about in the event of a fire. Period.
That's with the private wells. With the private wells, yes.
The conditions related to water testing are only to be revised to reflect a fire event.
Oh, I disagree with that. And that's not what the decision says. It says regarding private wells, I agree with you. It said that the private wells should only be tested annually in the event of a fire in the ESS. He did not, the decision didn't address Nexon's project sites, analyzing those wells for baseline, for example, or determining what quantity of water is available. That wasn't, I didn't see that in the decision.
The direction that we have is that quantity is to be struck and that testing is only, is to be limited to post-fire events.
Well, quantity is to be struck, that's another good issue for appeal. Thank you.
I am...
All right. Let me just, oh, no, you're just, you're just the messenger. I understand. But I, you know, I just wanted out there, part of the reason I'm going through this is sort of, you know, there's a record of what was said. All right. So just in regard to testing, annual testing, the elements and the chemicals that are being monitored should be established based on the proposed risks and use. I think there was, I think that Stacy mentioned specific metals. I mean, I would have to look at that and see if there are other chemicals that are involved in the batteries and not necessarily in the metal list. In the event of a fire in the ESS, abutters and abutters to abutters within 300-foot radius should be monitored annually or more frequently if recommended by an appropriate authority. I have no idea if one year is sufficient, if an event actually occurs. I'm sure there are people that are, that are knowledgeable that do know how often that should be. The key point being that once thermal runaway occurs, it can't be stopped. And the extent of harm that may result is unknown right now. We don't know how far the damage is gonna be. Only that evacuation may be possible. Regarding baseline testing, with the significant risks involved with the project to abutters and the environment, a baseline is required at the project site and for abutter properties. If the baseline quality is not determined for abutters to abutters, how will they approve, and how will they prove impact and harm if an event occurs? In other words, if an event occurs and people have to prove that their property was damaged, how can they do that if there's not a baseline of their property? You know, determining the quality. And so then the question raises itself, should they have to pay for that? If they wouldn't have to do it if it wasn't for this project? I think that should be something that Nexon should have to take care of. In fact, they should want to do it because if they found out that some of the properties were contaminated, that might take them off the hook. The board, in my opinion, the board should not abandon residents on well water beyond 500 feet from the ESS who may be impacted by a hazardous event due to the project. If evacuation is necessary, it will include abutters who are located more than 500 feet from the ESS. I also feel that any costs incurred by or damage done to abutters and abutters to abutters within a 300-foot radius from a fire, from a fire in the ESS or solar panels, because they can go on fire too, should be indemnified by Nexon or its successor. The risk of a fire in the ESS or the solar panels should be shifted to Nexon from the town and residents, as suggested in the court's decision regarding shifting the testing of private wells for contaminants to Nexon. I'll just end it by saying, and I think that the way to deal with this is just to think, what would you want if you were an abutter? Thank you for putting up with that.
Mr. Cogliano, stay there for a second. Remember the boards have any, remember the board have any questions for Mr. Cogliano? Based on, we have both of his letters and everything else, and he's obviously not a stranger to the board as it relates to solar either, but... Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I know we do have a significant crowd here this evening. Unless you have any objection, I'll ask if any other members of the public would like to comment. Okay. So. If there's anybody else who'd like to come forward and make any, have any questions for the board, make any comments, I ask you, please come to the podium here. Again, for people who are joining us remotely, the Zoom does have a reactions function within the system. So if you raise your hand, we will see it. And I will do my best to call on anybody who wishes to speak and try and go back and forth between in-person, virtual as best we can. Sir, if you want to...
A pair of...
To the podium, please, and just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Chuck Gallagher. I live in 201 Bay Road across this route and live in a nursery. There's a couple of things I wanted to point out that Joe touched on it, but the closest fire hydrant from our property is a mile away. When you have a project like this, my opinion, you should be looking at worst-case scenario. What's the worst thing that could happen and how can you prevent it or deal with it? Three shipping containers full of batteries catch fire. So it's a fully engulfed fire. Is the smoke and chemicals gonna stop right there and go no further? Does it just dissolve at that point? Or does it go across the street where I can throw a baseball into my front yard where my kids play? Okay, I think that's something, this is like fair to sea land, I think. It's not very realistic. It might sound good, and I might have paid people to say that, but I don't think it's very, personally, I don't think it's very realistic. The other point that I wanted to make was the fire department, excuse me. Do we know what kind of training they've had in this? And how many members of the department have been trained in it?
I would say that in the conditions that we're not discussing tonight, there were, there were conditions that the fire department needs to be trained on dealing with this. This product, this doesn't exist yet, so they would be trained...
If you wanna prove it, they have to be able to prepare for it.
Right.
And they have to have the equipment for it. They have to have the ability to get the water for it. And if they don't have all that prepared, how can you go forward with a project like that? And the third, last thing is...
It's a condition prior to the project being active.
Correct.
So if the condition can't be met, the project can't be made active.
Okay. And there's also been the talk of a response plan, right? They've had five years to put me together. Nothing's been done, but obviously not. Tonight, they said, what hasn't been done yet? Why haven't in five years they come up with a response plan on what they're gonna do for their project? Are they waiting for it to be approved and then do it? And sort of fudge around corners like they've done for the last five years? Or is it gonna be presented ahead of time before the project's approved and say, that's a good plan, we'll go with that? I mean, it's just a common...
It's a requirement prior to the project being active. I know that I haven't worked out logistics that I'm gonna have to deal with two years from now, but I've thought about it a little bit, so it's...
It's concerns that we have as names because the history of this project initiated sort of under the covers. So we're concerned that people are gonna do things under covers without us knowing. Because that's how it's happened in the past. As I'm sure you all know about the first meeting that was done in December that we changed.
I understand your point. I agree that outreach on this project, notwithstanding the zoning discussion that you're alluding to, outreach from the applicant in the early stages of this project was poor, and they admitted that.
Okay, so there's two big things out of water. Thousands, because they even said it's gonna go for a long time. We're talking days that water has to be pulled out of these containers, I believe. And I've read newspaper articles over the last couple of years of this happening all over the place. There was registered motor vehicles in New Bedford. They have solar panels on the roof of their facility. They caught on fire. And then, of course, this fantasy line, right? But it just dissolved at that point. It doesn't go straight up into the heavens. It continues into people's front yards.
That's, that line is only related to groundwater testing. That has nothing to do with the air.
Well, then I hope you'd consider the air because that's a huge factor if there's a fire.
It is not part of the conditions that we are allowed to consider with part of this, this, this...
Is the purpose, I'm naive, I guess, is the purpose of the plan able to protect the public, to protect the people?
Right now, the, there's a whole bunch of other conditions that are already in effect for this site plan decision. The only four that we're talking about as part of these discussions are the decommissioning surety, groundwater testing, and there's two of those, and sound.
I would hope that the town would wanna have...
Everything else goes back to the original decision.
Okay. I would hope that the town would wanna protect their people and have them wanna test those off at the point. Because as soil changes, the water can change as well, the direction of the water flow. All that stuff I would imagine. All that construction, they'd be pounding thousands of stakes in the ground. So I would think it's, I mean, is it expensive? Is that the reason that they don't wanna do it? Or is it, they're afraid of what they're gonna find out? Because it should be a no-brainer to just test water. It's people's drinking water. We don't have the opportunity of having town water in places if something happens. There's no pipes underground where if our well water gets affected, all right, we'll just hook up to town water.
I understand.
Yeah, I hope you understand the concerns. Thank you.
I'll turn around again if anybody would like to...
Hi, Marion Johnson, 208 Bay Road. The inverter array is probably about 100 feet or so from my property line. I don't know if any of you know, but there's an existing array, I think it's close to Fairleigh Lane. So that array is 2,000 feet from my back deck. And I just want you to hear, for those of you who have never heard an inverter, and when you're talking about so many DBAs above ambient noise, and you're not familiar with what that noise is, this is it. This is an inverter noise. And I'm happy to play it over again. I'll pass the phone around.
And that's constant.
And that would be constant, just saying. I can hear that. So anyway, my point was, I just, I just wanted you to hear what the noise was because you might think it's a whisper, and even as Tim pointed out, a constant whisper, it's gonna get annoying. That, that noise I hear 2,000 feet away from sitting on my deck. My pool is even closer to where these batteries and inverters are going to be. So if I'm sitting at my pool during the summer, that's what I'm gonna hear. Tell me how you're gonna block that noise. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Georgie in Arventitas, 207 Bay Road. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what she just said. I also hear, I'm at 207, it's right across the street. I can see that other array from across the street. I can hear it. It's constant. It's annoying, and I wouldn't wanna add any more noise to that. When we're looking at the noise that this will emit, what will happen if Nexon violates that? And how will it be enforced? And what may the consequences be?
They would be in violation of the site plan conditions, and the building inspector would have authority to make sure that those conditions are met or take whatever actions that he feels are necessary and appropriate.
Okay. And the other thing I just wanted to throw out there, I know some of you guys are new, but we did have Norton Fire Department comment on what they would do in event, if these did catch on fire, and quote, "They would let it burn." So just wanted to let you all know what they, how they responded to that. So think about that. Think about having two containers feet away from your house, feet away from your children, feet away from babies, infants, and people of all ages. So please consider that. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Bill Paul here on 15 for L.A. So I just wanted to just say that I share the concerns of all my neighbors here. When, we all have fears in every aspect of this project, particularly with the batteries and the source, the potential poisoning of our water. I mean, I live here, and this red line is rather well established just outside of any properties other than Mr. Cogliano's, right? There is not any chance that you'll be able to convince me that if there is a fire here with all of this water going here, that it's not gonna poison my family. It's absolutely zero chance. I don't care what specialist you get in here, what studies you have conducted. My well is directly fed from the water that comes through that area. And if you can't see that clearly, then, you know, I'm concerned. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tim, can we make one clarification? I mean, have this man had commented to us? The way I understand it, in a way, if we're looking at this, if there was a fire, we're gonna look at this like, is any type of other spill on the site? Say there was a fire, LSP would take over, a licensed site professional?
Right. If there's, if there's...
They would, by law, have to keep testing groundwater and soil until they found the limits of contamination.
Yes. So I am not an expert in MCP, Mass Contingency Plan, nor am I an LSP, which is why I hesitate to answer that question. However, it's a twofold condition, right? The board obviously has a concern about potential issues with water quality and that condition is a remand of what the board had requested, and we're recommending the five, well, Nexon is recommending the 500-foot radius because that's what mass DEP uses as an initial cut. If they find a release, which again is typically not something that just occurred, but it's something that's been migrating for years or decades, they...
They're going off gas tanks, basically, underground storage tanks.
Underground storage tanks, dumping, I mean, any source of oil or hazardous release, right? It's not, historically, if it's that type of release, it's not something that's found the day it's released. So after years of migrating or decades, and they use a 500-foot radius as their initial, this is what we test to see where it is. That's why, that's where the 500-foot came from, from our team's perspective. In addition to that, if there's an oil, well, it wouldn't be oil, but if there's a hazardous release associated with a potential future fire, there would be a licensed site professional involved. And to your point, they would have to follow the state law with regard to whatever is necessary for whatever that release might be.
As I understand it, as with oil spills or gas spills, whatever, they have to find the extent.
I believe that's true. I don't know it for certain, what their kind of limits on perceptibility, or it depends on the constituent, I'm sure.
I don't know what it is.
Right. Like I said, I'm not an LSP, so I can't answer that definitively. But yes, they have to comport with the Massachusetts contingency plan, the whole purpose of which is to address releases of oil or hazardous contamination to protect the public health and welfare.
Did that answer your point of clarification, Alan?
Right.
I'll take a moment and just state again, if anybody on the Zoom call joining us virtually would like to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting to do so. I do see other people here... I do see other people here in person who'd like to speak, so I'll ask them to come forward as well.
Joel Johnson, 208 Bay Road, so my property, let me read this right, it's right to the right of, just to call you down already, right outside of this imaginary circle here. So, just to reiterate what my neighbor said.
Excuse me, sir, just one second.
Yep.
If we can just quiet down while the people are speaking, please, thank you.
And just to reiterate what my neighbor said, if you just take common sense, right, they could rather startle all they want, it's, there's no way, this river feeds seven different towns, there's no way this entire site is not going to be contaminated if that storage blows up. And, like, I've been in the tech industry, these things happen all the time, I've testified in court, I've been in the tech industry for 20 years, and I've witnessed an explosion in those battery systems. It's not that uncommon, and it's, so, as soon as that happens, like Joe said, they're going to put tons of water and it's just going to seep into the ground, and there's really not much we can do about it, so, I mean, I've been in this town 10 years, I spend $11,000 a year in taxes, so giving you guys roughly $120,000. I'm looking for this board to help us, you know, why would you ever get rid of conditions? It doesn't make any sense, if, we're looking for you guys to protect us. When my wife got up here and showed you that noise, I've, I have lived next to that existing inverter for 10 years, I know they have experts about sound and they're saying decimals, I can hear that for 10 years, I can tell you what it sounds like, I know you Googled like what it sounds like, go to Hill Street and park your car right in front of that array and tell me if you'd want to live next to that, you just, you wouldn't. So when I look at, they came out with this study and were going to do eight decimals, like, I don't care what that number is, I just don't want to hear it. Whatever they did, they used their experts, they didn't use yours, so it's going to be to their liking, so if they wanted eight, they can get eight, if they wanted nine, they could probably get nine, whatever they wanted to do, they were going to get it. So I'd say to this board, like, don't trust that number, reduce it at least in half, and say, "We want four, this is not acceptable." And, you know, that's what I'm asking for here, I've been in this town 10 years, I volunteer my time, we have three kids in the school system, I'm looking for you guys to kind of make the right decision here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meredith Falconer, 11 Fuller Drive. My concern is really on, you know, they keep saying, and again, this was the remand, this was the court, send them back, saying that the, all we can talk about is if there's a fire, but it's been said over and over here, that these problems don't usually occur from the fire, they're ongoing, they're unknown, it's probably a slow leak or a drip. And I get that, we can't, we can't, we can't talk about that, that's not something that you guys can do. But if the concern isn't of the, you know, it's when there's a fire, so there would obviously be a site plan, somebody onsite managing this, if there was a fire, why do we still only have to limit to 500 feet? If, if they know there's a fire, right, that we know there was a fire, and they're not expecting that to happen, right, so what would the cost be for them to have to do all of others? It wouldn't be anything, if they're not expecting the fire, they're not expecting a leak, right? So ultimately, even if they did the 500 and they show, you know, again, the site plan, licensed site plan versus going to say, like, you have to do this, you have to do this, but how do we even know that they're going to do that? And if, and if this isn't going to be a problem, it's attainable, right? I mean, if they don't expect a fire, it's attainable to have them test all wells after a fire, right? Because that's all we can talk about right now. But why can't that be the condition? At least that's from what my perspective is, on what we can still talk about from a town.
It's up to the board to determine what we feel is an appropriate condition relating to that.
Right.
Yes.
So, that's at least my feeling on if we don't, if it's, if there's, no one is expecting this to happen, then why isn't that an appropriate condition? But again, obviously, that's just my opinion on this particular matter, it's something that's been ongoing for a really long time, and I do hope that the board can see from the perspective that this isn't just, if there's a fire, this isn't just impacting those of us who come to these meetings every single time there is one. It's, and I'm talking about a major catastrophe, if this leaks into the groundwater and then into the Canoe River Aquifer, this could impact 66,000 people, including the majority of the people in this room, depending upon where you live in town. So, that's my take from it. Thank you.
Turn around, is there anybody else here in the meeting who'd like to speak at this time?
Joe Sutoli, 9 Fairleigh Lane. My one question to the board would be, if there was a leak, they say it can't happen, it could happen, we're all on wells, would the town tie us into regular water?
I don't know if I can speak to that. I mean, I do not know what the town's plan would be in the event of something that made the wells unusable.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Brian Langton, 213 Bay Road, so right across from the box as well. To his point, town water, is that fed off of the other two wells that Joe was talking about, that are within that same radius? So could we even hook up to them? Wouldn't they be affected as well?
I believe that was Ms. Falconer's point, yes.
Yeah, so, that's the point, you know, why are we even considering this? You guys are playing with fire, it's not if, it's when. This is going to burn, that containment's not going to hold it, it's going to melt, you're talking thousands of gallons, it's a 50-foot container, there's not enough water that can be stored inside that container, especially with the batteries in there, where's the wastewater going to go? You asked about the cup full of water and the food cup, you answered your own question, it's kind of common sense, it's going to fill the bottom, and then it's going to go straight into the groundwater. It's an aquifer that affects 66,000 people, why would you consider this? This is insanity. You're supposed to be here protecting us, so we should at least have wastewater testing for everybody that wants it, anybody that's in the area, anybody that's hooked up to that 66,000. You should know where your water's at, they should be paying for this. And then we should have a way to get clean water if something does happen, you know, water's a right. And the noise, that noise is, I mean, it's not just noise, it's frequency, it's vibration, you know, it's, people are very sensitive to that. This is crazy, this does not belong here, this belongs somewhere else. My understanding that this was done because they have incentives to build over agriculture, they can find someplace else to put this. I mean, you guys are supposed to be looking out for us, they chose not to because of the incentives, you know, and that's where you guys are supposed to step in. And at the very least, you should be the extreme measures as far as sound, water, fire, all of that stuff. Who's going to pay to train the fire? Who's going to pay for all the apparatuses they're going to need to put this stuff up? Where's that money coming from? You said $500,000 isn't, you know, that bond, isn't to be discussed, as, you know, we can't discuss, what about the money it's going to cost to fix this? When it happens? It's not if, it's when.
That would be, that would be on that company, yes. I would say to your larger point, right now, this is a site plan that all we're talking about is these four conditions, the rest of the site plan is in effect. This board denied the project once, it went to court, it came back to us, we put conditions on the project, it's now come back to us again for some of those conditions.
Yeah, you guys really got to look at this, this is crazy that you're even considering this.
Right now, all we can look at is these four conditions.
Mm-hmm, I understand, and you can do your absolute most, not like cut it in half, cut it to zero, you know, do the maximum you can do, and let them pay for it, not us, because we're going to have to absorb it, the town's going to have to pay for it down the line, they're going to be gone, they'll probably sell this project. How many of these projects do they actually retain?
Zero.
This, this solar company, you know, so who's going to be responsible to pick up the pieces? We are. I hope you consider all that.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, Cheryl Bowden, 130 Bay Road. I just kind of want to stand up here and echo my neighbors, you know, this is a big consideration, I am in agreement that the noise should be around three decimals, if that can be. I do like also some of the suggestions that Joe had provided to the board, you know, at least there's alternative solutions there to be looked at. Also too, I do think there should be a safety plan in place, and not just provided to the board, it should be provided to the butters, to at least proactively look at this, to say, if something is to happen, how can we proactively get in front of this, and get in front of the risks and eliminate them? And a proactive risk management plan here should be included and provided to people, so that way we do know where the fire hydrants are, we, you know, we do know, you know, maybe, you know, what to do in case of an emergency, so it's not going to be, you know, we wait until we get to that point, so.
Thank you. Turn around again, see if anybody else would like to come forward and speak. And I'll revolve on for a minute here, just to make sure here. Obviously, we've talked about a lot, members of the board, do we have any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Is there anything that we would like additional information on at this point? To, as it relates to these conditions? I'm not sure if members of the board feel, I don't, I know, I'm, I'm familiar with this project from four years ago, five years ago, I know none of the rest of the board members are. Whether we would like to think about this, ask the applicant for a continuance to a future session, if they're amenable to that? So, I'll look to the board for their thoughts, comments.
I know personally, I couldn't make a motion on four of these conditions right now that would be clear and just, or suffice any of this. I wouldn't be prepared to do that right now.
Is there any additional information that we can get that would assist with your decision-making process at a future date?
Honestly, I wouldn't mind seeing some case studies on what exactly happens in the event of an ESS fire. I'd like to see...
Whether that's from the evidence, from the testimony, or...
I'd like to see, yeah, more current, I'd like to see, you know, lightning strikes, explosions, more than just there's a controlled fire within the box. I'm kind of looking for, you know, what exactly happens, what is the scope of the damage, what is the scope of the contamination?
In the event of a fire and a release from the system?
Yes.
With standard firefighting practices?
Please.
Okay. I'm not sure if that's, Ms. May, if that's something that you're able to provide with it from the evidence, from the trial, and from additional sources, or to understand the context as it relates to the fire-water contamination conditions.
Yes, and where size and scope would be very helpful. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, just to say, of addition, of similar size and scope would be helpful.
Yep.
So the, the challenge is that we are on a remand after our trial from the court, and so we're confined to the evidence that was presented at trial, we can present the testimony that was provided by the experts at trial, if that would be helpful, we can provide, so we're a little constrained in terms of...
You're asking for us to make concessions. We need the information to make, we were not involved in the original decision.
Or the trial.
Or the second, first remand, so we're flying blind here, if you'd like us to, if you'd like us to consider your concessions, we need some precedent.
Yep, no, I, I hear what you're saying. It is a very unique situation, or atypical, I should say, to have boards that are addressing remand where the scope is confined. As Kate noted, so the way it worked was, as, as the chair had noted, the project was denied, and then it went to court, and then came back and was issued 64 conditions, there were multiple, you know, appeals that were combined, and then all of that testimony relating to all of the issues that were raised in the appeals was presented, you know, to the judge by either side, with both of their experts. And then the court issued fairly clear, actually, from a, you know, my perspective, reading them, analysis of what was found to be credible, what was found to be a threat, et cetera, and found that these four conditions are the ones that are in question. And so, it's not that we're trying not to be responsive, but in terms of, you know, lightning strikes or other types of things that could result in a fire, that's not necessarily part of the scope of remand, and I fully recognize that the board was not necessarily as familiar with the project because they didn't go through the full permit, I'm happy to give an overview of it. The partic, and it is worth noting, as Kate had mentioned when I neglected to, there are 64 conditions that address other aspects of the project as well, and it's just these four. And so, you know, what you term concessions are really clarifications on the sound, it's the perceptible issue, it has to be something measured. On the water quality, there had been, and one of the commenters had alluded to this or noted it, concerns by residents about the steel posts in the crime right box. So the court heard all of that testimony related to every concern that people had raised, and they found that the potential for contamination from this project was a result of if there was a fire, that every energy storage system. And so I think the information that we could provide is, you know, information related to, like we noted, a licensed site professional would be on board if there was a release, as opposed to how a fire might happen, some more information about the containment system as it was presented at trial, to address those questions, so that you understand, you know, the availability of water to fight those fires on the site, that was discussed at trial as well. So I think we could certainly pull that information together, you know, piece it out from the testimony and provide it.
Can you get the data on percentage of installations that have resulted in a fire?
So, okay, pardon me. So, again, Amy Questle, Town Counsel, so you are in a very difficult position, but what I think you need to remember is that you have been ordered by the court to consider four conditions. And I would recommend that, you know, it's now 9:30 at night, and you guys have further, you have other hearings to tend to, I think that continuing this is a great idea. I suggest that all of you read the court's decision, particularly pages 29 and 30 really have a lot to do where the judge said, here's what you did right, but here's what you have to look at again. There are some instances where the judge said, here's what you did wrong, unfortunately, but, but I think that he does lay it out somewhat as to what exactly we can look at. He does give you some discretion, and he gives you some discretion with regard to what with the water quality testing and how far out that should go, and he also gives you some discretion with regard to the sound and the, and the DBAs above background noise. So, to determine those, I suggest that you read the decision and all 64 conditions, and then the land court decision, and then tab four, which is the amended judgment. Those, I think if we, if we take some time, continue this, if we all get a better, maybe a better grasp on that, after hearing everything we've heard, including from the public, I think, you know, personally, I want to go back and read the decision after hearing from all of the members of the public, I think it would be very, very helpful. So, I think that the applicant has agreed to provide us some further information, so I'm thinking that a continuance would be okay with the applicant. So I think that that's where we should go from here. And perhaps we could find the date that we had the fire department with the planning board during the last, during the last permitting, we had the fire, we had the fire chief at the, we dedicated an entire night to fire. And so if we could find the date of that, and if there's a tape of that, maybe we could find that and send that out, but I know, I was there, we did do it, it was at the media center, when the fire chief came and spoke and went through all this. So hopefully that will help, because that is within the record, okay?
Can you just ask one final question?
Can you just ask one final question? The, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Manning. The audio that Ms. Johnson played, the frequency, is that the frequency that could be expected from this site? Is that the tone where the abutters could potentially hear?
I am not a sound engineer or expert. I don't have a copy of that recording. I don't know.
That's inappropriate, please.
I was not the expert that provided the sound testimony. That was Acentec with the materials that were provided. I don't have a copy of that recording. I wasn't there when it was recorded, so I certainly cannot speak to it and how it would be in relation to this project.
We can't speak to what the volume or the frequency of that was. We can, the Acentec studies in the record.
Yes, and I would just comment that that's a different project with different equipment, maybe different than the, it's an inverter, but maybe a different make, model, newer technology. It's also not with a mitigation, a sound barrier. So that's another thing to keep into consideration. And so without modeling in terms of listening to the noise that's generated, I don't know that we can comment on whether or not it's the same frequency or what DVA over ambient level it is.
At the initial hearings, that was also mentioned. At, at the initial hearings, it was discussed that that was older equipment that is louder that was being proposed, and that was four years ago. How that all stacks up, I'm also not a sound engineer, so, but that's why we have the study. So we've talked about a continuance. I think our next meeting is probably too quick. So we would be looking at our, our late October, our November sessions.
October 17th is the next October, practically the 10th.
So we have the 10th and the 17th of October, and then we have November.
The week before Thanksgiving, week after.
Okay. From the next team, do you have a preference in terms of, do you?
The board's preference is fine, the information that we're talking about is all over the records, it's a matter of compiling it. So the 17th or the subsequent ones?
That's fine, from next, first 17.
Okay. Brian, do you have any idea in terms of which of those appears to be a busier or later agenda?
I'm going to say the 17th is probably the later agenda since it's after the 10th, which is the weekend. And so most likely, we're not going to get any more permits on it.
Okay. The members of the board have an objection to October 17th? Okay. So I look for a motion.
Motion to continue SP 42 remand to October 17th.
Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Eric for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, just so we can make sure that we're responsive to what the board is looking for supplementation in terms of additional materials, could you just, again, reiterate what you'd like us to provide?
I have, I have the more information on the containment system, more information on contamination regarding, you know, LSPs and the MCP and 21E, and then the ambient, the decibels above ambient noise. So what would, I guess, Ms. Palmer, or Parker, I'm sorry, Ms. Parker actually Googled it, but more information kind of on what's the, what is the noise, what's the perceptible noise at eight? What would that be? Is it a vacuum? Is it a whisper? Is there something?
Frequency.
Yeah, is there something other than Google?
You know, when it says 10 decibels, it's a whisper, okay, well, that's not so.
My whisper's louder than other whispers.
To Tim's point, when it's constant, that's one thing, and when it's at a very, what I would clarify, annoying tone.
Yes.
That's something further.
The sound guidelines do speak to frequency as well?
And so I apologize, I had not realized that additional sound information was being requested. I don't know that we can get that expert to provide additional information by the 17th.
So, Mr. Carmichael, is there a later meeting that we might be able to? I just want to make sure that we can have Acentec provide a response to the question in time.
It was the week prior to Thanksgiving, correct?
So it's the November 15th and November 29th? Oh, 14th and 28th, sorry, I'm looking at Wednesdays.
If November 14th acceptable to the board, that, that should work with us.
Alan, do you like to amend your motion?
So I'll amend my motion to continue SP 42 remand to November 17th.
And Eric, does your second still stand?
It does.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue? Okay, hearing none, I'll go through the roll. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So we are continued until November the 14th as it relates to this issue. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time and your attention. Just as a note, we do have additional hearings taking place, so you're welcome to stay around. Otherwise, we would ask you to please be respectful of the next person presented.
It's very difficult to get the guys, basically, it's easy to hear the speakers.
I don't think there's a sound system in this room.
I mean, I think. It would be fine if you guys were facing us, you're talking to the person here, that's your job.
I understand that, Sean. I'm not sure I have a solution for you today.
No, I'm just, food for thought, thank you. Okay.
Okay, everybody, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, please. Thank you. This is SPR 20100, 20103, 20106, and special permit 19928, 19935, and 20107, 0 Mansfield Avenue.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jack Jacobi. I'm an attorney with offices at 144 Bank Street. Now, I represent the applicant concern. Fred DeFusco is behind you, on concern. Dan Campbell is our engineer. It was at least a month ago that we first presented this project, and there were a number of concerns that were expressed, but two of them stood out among others. One was the issue of the extension of the sewer and how that might affect residents in the area. The second was to have us take a review, especially of the proposed development on Lot E. Just so you remember, these are three actual separate permits, one for C, one for D, and one for E. But for the Es, of talking about the entire project, we've called them all together and addressing all of them at once. So I'm going to talk to you only about the sewer, and I have some very good and interesting news, I think, for most of the people in the audience. In our discussions with the sewer department, they have asked us not to put the sewer in reservoir. They have asked us to extend the sewer only in Mansfield Avenue, to bring it up. You can see the green line here. It actually comes all the way out from 123. Our understanding is that that complies with their future development plans, and would be more helpful to them than to have it in reservoir. The second issue that then becomes important is that people were concerned that they would be required to connect to the sewer line. And our understanding from talking with them and reviewing state law is that since it is a privately developed line, they would not be required to connect unless and until their septic system failed. So no one would be required the day that the line went in to then spend any money to connect to the system. They could if they wanted to, it would be at their option. We would put stubs in as appropriate. But the state law says that if your septic system fails and sewer is available, then you need to connect. However, there is one exception to that, which is that if the cost of connecting is greater than the cost of repairing your septic system, you can then apply for a waiver so that you do not have to do that. So I know that that was of enormous concern to most of the people in the audience, was am I going to have to spend tens of thousands of dollars as a result of this project? And so the answer to that is no, you will not.
Do you have a specific reference for that?
We had numerous discussions with the, with the sewer department, but if you want us to give you the citation to the, to the mass CMR, I can, I can get that tomorrow.
I'm sure we could ask the water and sewer as well, if you had it in front of you, then I would write it down.
I don't, but, but.
He has it in front of him.
He has it in front of him. So this, this is the town of Norton, section 163-9, connection to sewers installed with private funding. And it says, "The owner or occupant of any building upon land abutting on a private or public way in which a common sewer was installed utilizing only private funding either prior to or after this bylaw shall, upon a violation of Title V of the State Sanitary Code, as it may be amended from time to time, whichever shall occur sooner, connect the same therewith by a sufficient drain, including any owner or occupant who is subject to an order to connect David honor before the effective date of this bylaw." So in English, that says, you don't have to connect until your system fails. If your system fails, you get a violation notice, or instance, you go to sell your house and it's inspected and your system fails, then that's when you need to connect. And, and again, there is also a waiver process if you are a long distance from the road.
Thank you for the clarification at that point.
And so then, because the hour's late, I'm going to stop speaking, and I know you all appreciate that. And I'm going to ask Dan Campbell to come up, just briefly orient you to what we had presented the first time, and then show you the thoughts that we've had about how we can improve this project and make it less intrusive to those who might especially be able to see light.
And just to confirm, are these plans were just submitted to us, I think, this afternoon, correct?
Yes, and we discussed them last night with the Conservation Commission, and we are next on the Conservation Commission on the 16th.
Correct.
Of, of October. So we probably would be asking at the end of tonight to continue to the 17th of October, especially because the previous hearing isn't on that night. And so we realize that you have not had a chance to digest this at all, but we have been working diligently to try to come up with a better solution and to deal with the questions that were raised. And so we wanted to present this. If there's any feedback we can get tonight, we certainly appreciate that. If you need to digest it for a while, we understand that as well.
I think the expectation was that we may need some time to digest it, but we would, if we have comments, we would send them to you through time step.
Excellent, thank you.
And for the late hour, we're hoping to keep it brief anyway. First, the new sewer was designed, connecting at 123, at the existing sewer line that was put in with the recent sewer project. In this location, there's a stub manhole at 123 being the road here. This is that first connector road, baseball field. So we're coming up Mansfield.
There's no traffic on that road ever?
No, no, it was, it was extremely easy to survey, too, trust me. We were able to get the sewer. We have preliminary approval from the sewer department staff on location. There's one minor modification. Staff asked that we keep it closer to the center line as we cross through this radius, so we're going to have to add a manhole in this location. So we bounce up and we bounce over. Generally, however, that is the pathway they would like us to take. So from a sewer standpoint, we're no longer going out reservoir, and we presented to Conservation Commission last night. They had a couple of questions as well. As you remember, we had a 24-unit apartment building on each of the buildings or on each of the building sites, associated with parking, driveways, drainage. Conservation Commission asked us slate movements last night. We did incorporate some of those today, but we wanted to talk to you about the sewer on the original plan, so that you could reference the conversation we had a month and a half ago. Then, on the new plan, which hopefully Brian can pull up in a second here.
What plan you said now? The new one, you said?
Should be Conservation Commission three.
Okay.
And I am a walker and talker, so hopefully nobody keeps me behind the podium. If we can scroll down just a little bit to the site plan itself. So the site plan itself, you can see what we've done is we've separated the buildings a little bit in the center. We've increased the size of the building on Lot C from a 24 to a 36-unit building. We've separated the 24 unit. This is based upon the conversation with the Conservation Commission last night. They, the building was closer to what is this radius from a wetlands line for the 25-foot new build. So we're trying to, to get the building a little bit more centered so that there's a little bit more room to move around the rear of the structure. We've moved around the garages at the front. We've moved around some of the parking to accommodate the changes in the building, as well as the increased need for parking based upon the size of the building. Lot E sees the largest change. Lot E changes from a 24-unit building to a counthouse scenario. That has associated parking in the buildings, as well as associated parking lots and dumpsters on each one of the locations. So the sewer would be here along Mansfield, not in the rear. We've changed the building structure from 30 feet from reservoir to 74 and a half feet at the closest building point. We're 45 feet at the closest parking point. And to some of the abutters' comments last time, we were able to place the fence then closer to the structures, disturbing less of the, the existing wooded area. That places the 24-unit building on Lot D, 247 and a half feet across the existing wetlands from Reservoir Street itself. It places the building on Lot C, 446 essentially feet from reservoir, again, across the existing wetlands. These two parcels at the top are under separate ownership, so we're looking at Lot E, D, and C.
Just, so you, with the change of Lot E, correct, the one closest to the intersection?
Correct.
To a duplex, does that change anything in terms of what is allowed by right or by special permit in terms of zoning? Is there any change to what you're asking for?
We're decreasing the overall impervious space, but we, we maintained all of our zoning setbacks and requirements.
But there's no change to the permits or the relief there?
The number of units is different on each of the three lots. So in the event that we get the feedback that this is the direction you want us to go, we would need to technically amend, because we'd have a different number of units on C and E. The other thing to point out is that these duplexes are two-story.
Two-story rather than three.
Structures rather than three-story structures, which was one of the things we heard from the neighbors and from this board, was to decrease the height of that which could be seen. And as you can see, the, the buildings on C and D are quite a distance from any neighbor on reservoir, and they are also, you know, across the wetlands. And so we tried to be sensitive then to decreasing the height. There was one other comment that was made, and Dan can address this, but there was a question about whether the parking could be in the rear or in the front, and the Conservation Commission had a very strong feeling on that. They did not want the parking areas next to the wetlands, because the buildings actually act as a barrier to protect the wetlands when you keep the parking in the front, which is where you end up with salt and you end up with fluids coming out of cars, et cetera, et cetera. So, in terms of managing the stormwater and in terms of making sure that the wetlands are protected, they had a very strong opinion that we should not put the parking in the back.
And to that end, one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight was, this is our original landscaping plan, to landscape the front of these structures, landscape around the parking lot itself, so that it did look more, a little bit softer on residential. While I know it's not necessarily the board's job to go and drive to other communities, Passaran owns an apartment community in Plainville, right on Route 1, the oasis of Plainville. If you want to drive by, you can see the landscaping itself, similar landscaping in nature to what we have, although we actually have a little bit more space between the buildings and the parking because of the Norton zoning bylaw. So, a little bit more room to plant, especially the front facade of the structure. The one thing I did want to point out is, we do have to have parking lots on the townhouses because of the way the Norton bylaw is structured. On multifamily housing, I can't officially park a car in that driveway, even though we all know there's going to be a car parked in that driveway. The driveway is not a parking space. According to the town's bylaw, a parking space for that unit is either interior in a garage, or is 20 feet away from that structure itself. So, each one of those driveways go to a garage inside the structure, and we have associated parking to the edges, as required by the bylaw for the units and bedrooms associated with a townhouse.
On the other hand, if it was the sense of this board that you wished for us to decrease the impervious by taking into account what we know will occur, we certainly would be receptive to such a request.
But, you have designed it to meet the bylaws as it is now?
As it is.
Thank you.
So, as I said, it's a late hour. We know we presented it yesterday, we wanted to talk to Conservation before we presented this to the planning board, we wanted to get some feedback on building locations, and that actually moved some of the buildings, including a garage in the 24-unit building today. At the late hour, I think I emailed it over to Brian at 3:00, so we understand you haven't had a full chance to digest, look at it, why. We did want to get the layout to you before we changed the remainder of the things, before we changed grading, drainage associated with it, so that we could hear comments associated with layout before we went to those other things.
And part of the reason why there was a delay was that our wetland specialist and the conservation agent moved a few flags around, and of course, every time you move a flag, something else moves as a result.
Understood. So, I'll turn to members of the board if we have any additional questions for the applicant at this time. Absent questions, comments right now, I would ask that if we can try and set aside some time to look this over, provide any comments to Brian over the next week, and those can be compiled and sent to the applicant. I'm going to say, just looking at a calendar, if we're compiling comments by the 3rd, if we can get them to you, potentially get responses by maybe the 10th-ish, and that gives us a week before the meeting, potentially on 17.
Absolutely, that sounds like a real...
I can look at a calendar.
Yeah. But, you know, giving us a week, giving you a week, you know, at the beginning, giving us a week at the end, I think it makes good use of time.
Okay. So, members of the board?
Yeah, just one quick, how many feet of sewer is it now? Do you say anywhere?
It's approximately 2,600 feet.
2,600?
So, let's say a mile?
It's about half a mile.
5,208.
It's a little bit more than 2,600, but we're about half a mile.
But, part of the reason, as we said in our discussions with the sewer people, was that this will help with a more critical need for them going forward than having it in reservoir. And, I know that our neighbors in reservoir were particularly concerned with this.
Okay, understood.
Just thinking off the top of my head, but you said, where is that manhole on 123?
It is, it's on 140 itself, but it's at the intersection.
Because they're just paved, and I don't know if they're going to... Is there some type of paving moratorium?
No, because it's a, well, it's not only on the side of it, but it's on the part that's owned by Mass Highway. So, where we are on structure-wise, where we are in structure-wise...
It's going to be right by the turn lane.
Yeah, it's right by the turn lane. If you want to take your life in your hands, you can go take a look.
There's also people out there taking their lives in there.
Yeah, we, I mean, we hire police details, because it is a dangerous intersection for us to do this in.
Yes, okay. Members of the board, have any additional questions for the applicants at this time? Otherwise, I know we do have a bunch of people joining us virtually and in person related to this agenda item as well. So, if there are any questions or comments for members of the public here, I see one person getting up already. And if you're in the virtual meeting, if you'd like to use the reactions function, raise your hand as it relates to what we've talked about this evening. Please feel free, and I'll try and go back and forth.
Again, my name is Jim Chabot, I reside at 56 Mansfield Avenue. I hope this doesn't sound repetitive, rather than making statements, I'll probably reiterate my same six points in the form of questions. We talked about responses to what was heard, and, while being respectful, I think those were responses to people who are angry and fighting mad, but they weren't responses to mad as a law and to impediments to this being issued. So, I'd ask, again, is it socially and economically desirable? I would maintain that it's not, that this will cost the town more in services than they will receive in taxes. So, economically for the town, this is going to create a drain on services, the biggest of which, I think we all know, the biggest drain, oh, that's the wrong word, I'm sorry, I won't use that word. The largest expenditure that the town makes is our school system. It accounts for, I mean, historically has accounted for...
A significant portion of the budget.
It's way past half now, isn't it?
I just go significant portion, stop thinking.
Okay, that's fine. But, in any case, it takes a significant amount of taxes to pay for our school system, to keep it as good as it is, and we do have a good school system. If we add more people to that school system, the costs are going to go up, and we've already seen this year, I think that, I don't know how far it's gone, but there's been talk of an override due to additional expenses that have come through state mandates, and I guess things are not in a great shape right now fiscally. This doesn't help. I think I had mentioned it before, I think the old rule of thumb was residential unit requires 1.4 times cost versus taxes paid, so we need commercial and industrial to make up the rest. This is going in the wrong direction. Do we have things going in the wrong direction? We certainly do, by right, but they should never be allowed by special permit, and our law reflects that. Actually, I'm not 100% sure. Is that also state law?
In terms of...
I know we have it in our zoning code, these items that have to be considered for the issuance of a special permit, and I'm not 100% sure, that might be as much of our zoning code parrots to state law.
I'm...
Not sure, but...
I think that the, those core conditions for a special permit are something that we consider bluntly every time, within the...
Thank you.
I like to follow the four corners rule. It's within the four corners of the page and it's right in front of me.
But, there's six, but anyways.
Four corners of the page, yes.
Two, satisfy an existing need. Has the applicant been asked to prove this? I mean, they certainly have the opportunity, I would think it would be incumbent on the board to require as part of the submittal that this be proven by study.
And we also do look at housing studies for the town in general. We were going to have one on our agenda this evening, and we'll have it on a future agenda with our regional planning agency as well.
Right. The current master plan, the current studies indicate that this is an area not where we're looking for housing, this is an area where we're looking for shops, we're looking for to somehow, I was going to say revitalize the town center, probably a more appropriate word would be to vitalize the town center, because we've never had a vital town center in this town. And if we allow areas in that vicinity to be developed this way, we close the door to having a chance to having a vital town center, which I think is something, I mean, I can't think, all the time I've been in Norton, of anybody saying, "We don't need a town center, we don't want a town center." What I hear from people all the time is, "Why are we the only town without one? What's wrong with us? Are we the redheaded stepchild?" And no offense to redheaded people, but this is a valuable area in that regard. The third one, inside the four corners, is, has the applicant been required to show in a quantitative manner that the advantages outweigh any detrimental effects? And, according to the earlier questions, I don't see any advantages, so maybe that could be shown. Effects on the neighborhood and environment shall not be significantly greater than if the special permit were denied, and that, I think, is a big one. I don't see anywhere where there's a plan showing a by-right proposal that would be, that would have a greater detrimental effect. And that's required, as part of the submittal. You have to show a plan saying, "I can do this by right, this is better for you." And that's not being, that's not being shown. I had actually thought about for this meeting, drawing my own plan of what I think could be allowed there by right. It's far less effective than this, I think that's fairly obvious. But, it should be formally pursued in that the applicant should provide a plan showing a by-right proposition that is more detrimental than the current proposal.
The applicant is certainly welcome to do that, and if they don't, then the board will draw its own conclusions on what that would look like.
Thank you, that helps with my concern. Five, the applicant has no reasonable alternative to accomplish his purpose, and I'm not sure how to...
It speaks to hardship. They're asking for relief with a special permit, it speaks to hardship.
Right, and I'm just not sure if this even fits the question. And, conditions to minimize detrimental effects and protect the neighborhood have been imposed, and you know what, you guys have done a decent job on that. You have, you've reduced the exposure to sewer by a huge amount, you've moved things away from reservoir, you've done a good job in that concern. But, I don't see how you get past the statutory requirements for the special permit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do see a person up in the Zoom meeting, so I'll come to right after that. So, I see somebody in the Zoom meeting with the name Val Cabral on the Zoom, so if you'd like to unmute and just state your name and address for the record, please.
Val Cabral, 50 Mansfield Ave. I have to say that I'm happier with this than I was with what I had previously heard, so I will say thank you for the pieces that have been changed, that sound, that sewer piece was definitely significantly concerning. I would really love to have like ironclad documentation of the fact that there would be no requirement to connect unless it failed, like I, that's something that is, has been a significant concern in our house for this project. One thing that I'm curious about, if it's being taken into consideration, is the potential for where these driveways into the parking lots are going to fall versus the lots across the street. I know there are only a few of them. Our driveway is already straight across from Reservoir, it can be difficult to get out of the driveway with the speeds on 140 already, and I'm curious if there's some way that we can get that shown. I couldn't quite tell where all of those driveways were falling, and I just, I know the traffic addition is potentially another burden to the folks who live across the street like we do, and I'm just curious if that's been taken into account, if it's trying to be offset or anything like that.
Sure, so I'll ask the applicant's engineer, can come forward a little bit, but because this is on 140, the state is involved in the process for any curb cuts? And in general, if I'm saying the wrong thing, please correct me, that it is best practice to have the curb cuts across from existing driveways wherever possible?
It's best practice to have them across from a similar existing driveway, for sure. So, we will be going through the DOT process, and we have located them proximate to the existing commercial driveways across from us, taking into account the residential driveways. Also, we've now moved lot E's significant driveway further away from the intersection as well.
Thank you for confirming. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Thank you.
The only other thing I would say is, as many trees as you could put if this goes through. I've pulled up Google Maps for the oasis at Plainville, there are trees, there are not trees, but I'm that sucker who is always upset to see trees cut down, having grown up on a road that was heavily wooded, off of another major road that was heavily wooded, and then seeing it kind of clear cut the older I got. These aren't, ornamental landscaping is not the same thing as the habitat that's provided by the trees that were there, so I'm glad to hear that it's not, we're not going to put anything up, but personally, the loss of those trees, I live way back from the street, it's not like I'm out there all the time, but I hate to see more trees get lost in this town.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, from past anecdotal evidence, I understand that Norton's landscaping bylaw includes lots and lots of trees per square foot compared to relative other towns.
Based upon distance of parking, yes.
Okay, so I know we had one other...
Deidre Braga, 19 Reservoir Street. So, I've been in Norton for about 30 years, not necessarily as a resident, but I was a student at Wheaton College, and we used to do 1991, I was on a sports team, and we would run the reservoir route, because there was no traffic. Now I live on Reservoir, and you can't run that street, you can't walk my dog. So, last time you said you were going to do a traffic study, I don't think you've done that yet, right? Along with the increase in the new apartments that are going to McDonald's, I, you mentioned COVID last time, and I work from home, but now I'm back at work. I happened to stay home today for a week, it sent me down Reservoir O.M., because it's too much traffic on 140. So, I think you still need to redo the traffic study, and that was a question that came up last time. I do appreciate the work on the sewer, that's great, but it's a concern for me with the traffic, that's not only going to be on Reservoir, but trying to get out of it.
I think that is still something that's in process, correct?
Yes, so we determined that until we got the reaction from the Conservation Commission and from this board, so the revised plan, that it was really not an effective use of time to finish off the traffic study or to update it. And so, based upon what happens with you and with the Conservation Commission, we can then give the traffic expert the opportunity to say, "This is where we're going," and these are, and then he can say what the numbers are. And, he did hear the comments about the other projects and taking that into account. It just felt that it was premature for tonight, given the fact that we were changing on the fly.
It's still pending.
Okay, a couple of the questions, the two-story, was that only on lot E?
That's only on lot E, correct, yes.
And then, how far was the fence from Reservoir? From this street, you said you were pushing it further in, how far was that?
Sure, if you don't mind. So, we moved the parking lot, as I said, to 45 feet from Reservoir. We set the fence 10... We set the fence 10 feet off of the parking lot. And so that makes it approximately 35 feet from Reservoir at its closest point.
Okay.
It'll be approximately 66 feet from Reservoir behind the building.
But just at that corner there?
Just at that corner.
I see the fence, I see the parking lot.
So, and the reason I set it 10 feet off of the parking lot is discussions not only with Concom last night, but discussions here. We wanted to consider things like snow removal and landscaping. So we need approximately 10 feet to be able to clear the parking lot, to be able to push snow in that area, things of that nature, without destroying the fence constantly, and then having complaints from neighbors, because we won't be able to put the fence back until the spring. And, and that seems counterproductive for everybody, including the developer.
And also planning for that part, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll again say, if there's anybody on the Zoom meeting who would like to raise their virtual hand and speak at this point, otherwise I'm going to turn around again.
How far did the sidewalk go?
So, so I see somebody on the Zoom meeting with the name Biff Tannen. If you could just state your name and address, please, for the record, since the Zoom name doesn't count.
Thank you. My name is John Shea, I live at 25 Reservoir Street. I apologize for getting late to the meeting, and I also apologize for my stage name, that's a long story. So with that said, can we just rehash sewer real quickly about what they're doing? Are they holding down Reservoir still, or are they moving down 140?
So the current plan is to go straight up 140 from the center to the project site, basically. And they stated...
Thank you very much for that. To whoever's there, thank you. And thank you for listening to our concerns about that.
Yeah. And they stated that, and they referenced some Norton sewer regulations that residents, that because it is a fully private sewer development, residents would not be required to tie it in until their septic failed.
But that won't even affect the roof pillars on Reservoir?
Well, still, to restate it again.
A secondary question to all this, not that I'm abandoning my concern for sewer, but on the original plan, it was a three-inch sewer line. My question still would be out there, can houses hook up to a three-inch sewer line? I don't know enough about sewer to ask that question.
That is...
If that could just be, go ahead, sorry.
I would, I would say that the applicant has been in communication with the Water and Sewer Department, and they're the ones who are qualified to decide what sewer lines make sense for what they have.
Perfect. I like that, the Water Department's qualified, we like that good. All right, well, I apologize for dragging on the beat later, and I, as always, to all involved, thank you very much for your time. It drags on everybody, but somewhere in the end we'll find a good resolution, so thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
If I may address the very last part of that. It was a three-inch sewer on Reservoir, because we were using what's called a low-pressure sewer force main, which is a wildly different technology than a gravity sewer. Inside of Mansfield Ave, we'll be using entirely gravity because of the directionality that we go. So it will be an eight-inch sewer main down the center of Mansfield versus the low-pressure force main that we were installing on Reservoir.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation, appreciate it.
Okay. And I will turn around one more time. Not seeing a whole lot of motion here. Obviously, we have already talked about a continuance with the applicant, potentially October the 17th. Do we have any additional questions for them at this time? Otherwise, we can provide them in follow-up.
Can I just ask, there's two blocks in both parking lots that are kind of, they almost look like QR codes. Is that snow removal locations?
Dumpster.
Okay. Where's snow removal going? Where is the snow storage?
So it, the town requires 20 feet from the front of the structure to any parking lot, which gives us plenty of room to remove snow off the edge of the parking lots. We've also included islands in the centers of the parking lots to push towards for the smaller storms in multiple locations throughout, and room at the ends of said parking lots to push from one end to the other. We did promise the Conservation Commission last night that we would not only talk to the developer, but the person the developer typically hires for snow removal, to make sure that they were also satisfied, and we were gonna provide that to the Concom, happy to provide it to you as well.
Short answer, between the parking lots and the buildings?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have any additional questions, other than a potential motion to continue to October the 17th? Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Eric for the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. I'll go through the roll again. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay. Very much so.
Get out of your way.
See you on the 17th.
We do have a couple more things on our agenda here. While that applicant gets set up, I'm gonna say that I'm gonna take just a two-minute recess here. Anybody who'd like to join me, feel free. Thank you. Thank you. I love having to get some clear answers. And especially this late at night. You won't, this won't reproach the record, so...
Oh, and I, when we were doing big project at DAS, they would take us till about 2:00 in the morning, and then have to drive home from DAS. I think it was a hobby of theirs to put anybody that was further away later, just to see if you would stay.
We crossed one one time, I don't think we hit two.
2:00 AM is my top, we're getting home at 4:00.
Okay. Okay. So we've still got a couple minutes here. Three hours in, people need a quick bio break? Still waiting on one number, so I just have to wait one more minute? Our members of the board ready?
Yes.
Okay. So next item on our agenda, everybody, is definitive subdivision plan for number 20336. This is Zero Reservoir Street. I'll ask the applicant to come forward, give just an overview of their initial presentation, and then we can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, my name is Edward Corcoran, I'm an attorney in Milton, working with the applicant, Daniel Vayana, and Residential de Noves, which is the formal name of the applicant. I'm joined by Cam Campbell, who is engineer for the project. We were back before this board in April for preliminary subdivision approval. The board voted to deny the application at that time, and I think substantially because, as in the last hearing just conducted, there was a question about whether sewer, those on, whether on Reservoir Street or on Mansfield Road would be required to tie into a sewer if a sewer were privately funded. I have the same answer as counsel from the previous. I actually sent a letter to Mr. Frank Fornier, asking that question specifically. He responded with an email that clarified specifically that a privately funded sewer, if it's, even if accepted by the town, there is no requirement that a butter's tie-in unless there was a failure under Title V. So I have copies of my letter and Mr. Fornier's email response from members of the board. Beyond that, I will introduce Cam Campbell to take you through an overview of the subdivision, and then obviously be available to respond to questions and concerns that we may have. Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Cameron Campbell, I'm one of the subengineers for the project. So this project is a 28-acre vacant piece of land on Reservoir Street. It's parcel ID of 9-223. It is, has 1.8 acres of wetlands, as you can see in the bottom right-hand, middle-left, and top along Reservoir, along Norton Reservoir. It's slightly sloped towards Reservoir Street, and the wetland in the corner at the midpoint of the site, and then starts to drop off towards the Norton Reservoir. Has 320 feet of waterfront on the reservoir, is 589 feet of frontage on Reservoir Street. It's, the site's completely in the Water Resource Protection District. It's, a small portion of it is in the floodplain district, and also in the wetland overly district. There's, as I mentioned before, the sewer, there's no sewer at the frontage of the site. There is an eight-inch water line in Reservoir Street, and then O-RAD power. So the applicant's proposing a 14-lot subdivision with a 50-foot wide red of way through the center of it. Each lot is 60,000 square feet or greater to meet the zoning requirements. There's a couple of easements being proposed for drainage and utilities as well. Here's a more zoomed-in look at the lots. This is Reservoir Street down here, and you're, you have two, two entry points, the road loops through the site, and exit on, exit at either end of the frontage. Here's through the center of the site, into the rear. And here's the rear of the site along Norton Reservoir. And again, limit of the wetland overly district, limit of the floodplain, and the wetland along the Norton Reservoir. All these wetland lines have been approved by the Conservation Commission through an O-RAD, and they're, it's recorded at the Bristol County Registry of Deeds. I have the book if you guys want it. So the proposal is to put a 26-foot wide roadway with five feet, five-foot wide sidewalks on either side, with a three-foot landscape buffer between the roadway and the sidewalk. It's slope, granite curb around the whole thing, except for at the entrances, it'll be vertical to protect it better for turning vehicles. There are 35-foot radiuses at the, at the entrances. And there's street trees proposed every 40 feet required by the subdivision regulations, and there's also lighting proposed every 400 feet or less, and that, at the curves, to provide better lighting. The grading, the road follows the grading to the maximum extent practical, to eliminate the amount of cut and fill on the site. It's relatively a mild slope through the beginning, it's 1% to 2%, and towards the end, and it increases to about 5% or 6% in the rear. And then at the edges of the road, it's a 3:1 slope to catch back up to the grade. The most significant portion is at the rear, because it starts to drop off. There's a small, there's a small retaining wall along this side to eliminate any grading out into the 25-foot buffer of the, of the wetland. And there's a small retain, there's a retaining wall along this portion to allow for a drainage detention basin. A little more zoomed in. This is a constructed stormwater wetland to provide treatment and mitigation for the runoff for the roadway, as long as it's also a rain garden, to also provide treatment. And at the rear, there is a surface detention basin with the wall and an eight-foot wide access gravel to be able to maintain the basin. There's a proxy, there's, I'm gonna see. Throughout the entire site, we have 25 catch basins, 14 new manholes, and then six water quality treatment to further increase the treatment of the water coming off the roadway before it gets released to either the Norton Reservoir or to the wetlands. It's been designed to meet the Mass State Code for, I'm gonna throw them on the handbook. So the utilities through the site, it'll be an eight-inch water line looped through the site and connected in two points in Reservoir Street, with hydrants at proposed locations that have been approved by the fire department. And in the process of being approved by Water and Sewer, they're currently looking at doing a peer review for the project. There will be underground electric, and a four sewer main through, a low-pressure forced sewer main through the site for the houses, where it meets a gravity sewer line proposed along Reservoir Street from a manhole between Elm Street and Acre Road. It's about 1,300 feet away, and it's an eight-inch gravity line that'll go to the corner of the site down to the existing manhole.
And that's all I have for the development. If you have any questions, let me know.
I think obviously we have, we may have additional questions.
Yep.
Going back to the original preliminary subdivision, your colleague mentioned sewer. The other notes that we had in that decision stated that we didn't feel that a number of the lots met the subdivision design standards for slope or other factors. There was a mention of community project in the plan, such as a boat ramp, and then the scope of disturbance and grade fill of areas within the 100-year flood boundaries and Water Resource Protection District. At a very high level for the project, can you share what, what has been done to address those concerns?
Well, we've tightened up the grading along the roadway, so everything's outside of the floodplain district and the wetland protection district. No slopes go into it. I know there was an issue, one of the members had an issue with the conceptual houses that were on the plan, we took those off. Eventually, they will, the house will be built, which will have to go before, for each separate lot. The majority of the lots are outside of the wetland conservation jurisdiction. The, the slopes meet the... The slopes meet the side slope requirement for the subdivision regulation. The issue I believe you had was disturbing a slope 15% or greater within the subdivision guidelines. Ask you to disturb a slope 15% or more to the maximum extent practical, as little as you can, and also eliminate as much tree clearing as you can. And this site plan does that. There's very little slopes on the site that are, existing slopes on the site that are 15% or more. There's a small section where there is a knob of ledge here. That is 15%. This slope here is 6% to 8%. And the 3:1 side slope along the road is specifically laid out in the guideline, in the standards for side slope on the subdivision regulation.
Yeah, I think it was, there was a, in the previous plan, there was significant slope and grade, especially on the lots close to the reservoir.
Yeah, we tightened that up closer to the road.
If I could just, it wasn't necessarily the placement or showing the placement of the structures on the lot. It was the fact of the grade or the slope of the lot.
So by having a house there, you're going to need to fill?
Yeah, looking at, you know, a four-bedroom colonial is probably got a footprint of, what, 24 by 40. It's a nine-foot change in elevation front to back. That's a 37.5% slope.
Well, you can do walkouts.
All right, but then you've got to remove and disturb existing land. You've got to excavate, correct?
Yeah, for the foundations.
Okay, that does conform with our design guidelines.
Within the Water Resource District, it allows for excavating.
Designs, I'm talking about our subdivision control law design standards, Section 5.1 specifically B.
Which is the design skyline.
The area over which existing vegetation will be disturbed, especially on land within 200 feet of it up, or having a slope of more than 15%.
And that's the existing conditions. It doesn't say anything about creating a slope greater than 15%.
I understand that, but looking at these contours, you're going to build houses, and I'm going to assume you want to put lawns on them. You're going to disturb all of that area. Everything will be draining into the reservoir.
For the houses, they will require their own separate drainage system by the Conservation Commission when they go to develop the lots that are within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. The only lots that'll drain directly to the reservoir are these two in the rear. The rest will drain into the drainage structures and design that we've come up with and the detention basins and be treated.
I see an issue with lots three, four, and five specifically. The contours on that are significant. There's no way you're going to be able to adequately mitigate runoff from those properties not going into the reservoir. And if these properties are going to have lawns, those homeowners are going to want to put fertilizer down. And we have subdivision control law with regards to fertilizer as well on residential properties.
And we have a fertilizer maintenance plan. In the operation and maintenance plan, there's a fertilizer control statement to use only slow-release fertilizer. And the amount of clearing the homeowners will be able to do on this lot will be controlled by the Conservation Commission. They won't be able to have these massive luxurious yards because of the proximity to the wetland.
I understand that, but you understand a homeowner can put down whatever application they want on their lawn regardless of what the homeowners association says?
Well, there's no plan for homeowners association, but, yeah.
So how are you going to restrict fertilization of lawns after it's sold?
It would be the Conservation Commission's responsibility.
Is there a plan for a homeowners association to be in charge of road maintenance and snow removal?
The plan is to have the town accept the road.
Until the town accepts the road, there needs to be a plan in place.
Yeah, and we can do that, yeah.
Okay, but the town accepting of the road is not a given.
Yeah.
That is...
The last ones have been rejected.
So we would need to see a plan for that.
And we can provide that.
That is, okay. And just, if you want to take it down, I think Laura mentioned it, but it is in our subdivision regulations, Article 5, and it's right off the top for that area, the slope.
The slope, yeah.
I felt some concerns with C, the number of matured. This entire lot is all matured trees, and you're going to clearcut it.
Well, we're going to cut for the road originally, and then when the homeowners go in...
It's a subdivision. You're going to clearcut it. You're not going to move equipment around. You're not going to leave...
They'll cut in the road.
I understand that. Are you going to leave trees in between lots?
Yes, that is the plan. It'll be cut in. We have, I have an erosion control plan. I can show you. So this orange line is your limit of work and your limit of erosion control. The plan is to cut in the road. They'll clear along the road, and they'll clear for the drainage structures and a small section for staging. And then that is it. Until the lots sell, then the homeowner will either have, the person who buys a lot will design a home that they want to build, or if they decide to build the houses, then they will come again before the building department and show the plan.
Okay. Do we have additional questions for the applicant at this time?
I would just like to comment that I think if you were going to try to sell us on this project, you need a lot of, you need to clarify your plan. You need to have a plan for who's going to maintain the road, how it's going to be maintained, when the town's going to take it over. The idea that because the houses aren't on the screen, that I haven't seen the last plan and know that houses are going to go on it, doesn't change the fact that it's going to be a subdivision just because the houses aren't there. You know, everybody has a yard. Everybody clears stuff, as we've said. The conservation cannot prohibit people from fertilizing their lawn. The lots up at the top, like she said, especially four and five, are almost offensively on the edge of the property. When this was originally proposed the last time, I spoke against it as a resident. I don't see almost any difference made to this plan. So I, something needs to happen here to make it valuable to the community, worthwhile, because right as it is, it seems like it's just a way to turn over property without thought of what Norton needs, what the neighborhood is, how it's been for years. There's not one community feature on here. There's no public parking. There's no access to anything. There's no nature trail. There's been no thought about trying to make this a benefit to the community. That'd be my input.
I am very disinclined to approve anything that involves development on lots three, four, and five. I've said it. This'll be the third time now. Just because you can do it doesn't mean it should be done.
I agree. But it's also, it's allowed by the subdivision regulations, so there is a, we meet them, and that's, we believe we meet them, and that's all I can say with that.
Okay. Do we have additional questions or clarifying comments that the applicant can provide to us in follow-up? Again, this is a definitive subdivision application for us.
Yeah. With regards to Water Resource Protection District 14.563, I want to know how you're going to enforce the fertilization.
It's in the operation and maintenance control plan, and that'll be...
I understand that, but that's only really a T U. Once these are sold, all bets are off.
The operation and control maintenance plan gets recorded at the deed and is given to the homeowners for every, when the lots sell, and they're required to follow that.
If I may, I think it's more in the effect of like a speeding sign versus a speed bump. You can put a regulation there and tell somebody to go slow, but without a physical limitation, they might surpass it. You can tell a homeowner not to fertilize their lawn, but if there's not some area where the water's going to collect and actually filter that out, they might do it anyways. I think it's in that regard. We could say not to do it.
Well, there's a lot of areas where it'll collect and filter out. It's just the last two, which the conservation will require when you build the house, to have some sort of drainage to allow for the treatment.
Yeah, I would say my biggest thing is try to consider it from a community perspective and offer something to the town to make it, why would we want it? If nobody can go there, nobody visits it, it's privatizing our shore, it's one of our last big sections of woods in the area. Convince the town that this is worth doing. Get community support, and then maybe we can support it more.
I'll have to talk with the applicant about the community features.
Did I hear correctly, water, sewer, all that, it's going to be peer reviewed or might be peer reviewed?
Water and sewer will be from the Water and Sewer Department. And once we apply for conservation, they'll have their own peer review for drainage as well.
You have not applied to conservation at this time?
No, we're still trying to get the layout right before we apply and waste the time of the conservation department and our applicant of having to go back and change it over and over again. I've had to talk with John Thomas regarding that.
I'm going to have a bit to say about lots three, four, and five.
And that means that we do not have a peer-reviewed stormwater at this time. But understand why you've chosen to do that.
And John Thomas, the conservation agent, has seen this plan.
Understood. So I've mentioned homeowners associated for maintenance of roadways and other functions and snow removal. Is there anything else that we can ask the applicant that we have not already?
Yeah, I got one. Near the rock ledge, it also has mapped out a stone hearth. Is that an archaeological site for us in town, historical thing? What's actually there?
It's just a, it's a stone fireplace that someone built at some point. There's walking trails all through here that it's been passively used, and there's just an old stone fireplace there. It's not historic by any means.
Fair enough.
Good question. I hadn't noticed that. Okay. So I will, Mr. Campbell, I'm going to turn around and ask if any of those, any members of the public would like to ask questions through the board. So if anybody's here would like to come forward, just take the podium and state your name and address for the record, and I'll just ask that you direct your questions to the board, and if we have questions where I can answer them, I'll do so. If there's questions that need to ask the applicant afterwards, I'll do that.
Don Swabe, please. 62 Reservoir Street, between this and Elm Street. I'm a little disappointed that more of the residents haven't shown up compared to the last time. I think this is an improvement over the last one. My concerns are the traffic involved, 14 homes, at least two cars per home, adds even more to the reservoir speedway, as someone has noted on the sign already. And it's egregious. I've talked with the police. There's not much they can do. I agree with comments made previously about the fact that something is not supposed to be done, does not mean that it won't be done anyway. And I am afraid, just as you are, that it's going to be, yeah, we're not going to clearcut. Boom, it's gone. Then what are you going to do? So I'm only expressing those minor concerns. Considering the small amount of Reservoir Street, it has a very large effect on that Reservoir Street. And I've been in town 37 years, and it's just getting worse and worse. And I don't see this, to your point, adding to the community. I see it as making it worse. So that's it. No questions.
Thank you for your comments. Turn around, see if any guests would like to speak. Also, again, if people are joining virtually and they would like to speak, just raise your virtual hand in the Zoom meeting, and we will get to you. I don't see anybody now, which is why I'm rambling to myself for 10 to 15 seconds just to keep, make sure that people have a chance to unmute themselves as they need, not hearing anything further. If we don't have any additional questions for the applicant at this time, I'd ask if they're amenable to a continuance while they work on the things we have commented on.
Yeah.
If I may, one more suggestion. For the applicant, if they have the time, take a trip over to Juniper Beach in Norton and see what that means to our community, that little beachside area that we have publicly available, as a reference to what that shoreline could be.
The community feature was mentioned in our initial denial.
Yeah.
So it's...
And I'm aware of Juniper Beach. I grew up in Norton.
Okay. Thank you. So in terms of continuation, we have meetings in October on the 10th and the 17th, correct? And then in November on the 14th and the 28th. I won't speak for you, Mr. Campbell, in terms of the time that you think would be required to compile what you need.
Sounds like the 17th is substantially busy. You've got continued the last two.
Just the last one. The solar project was continued until November.
Okay.
So it does still have the 20-Hill Avenue. It does not have anything else other than what was already submitted.
I think the 17th.
Remember, does the board have any objection to continuing until October 17th? No? Okay.
Or should it continue to 20336 on October 17th?
Okay, thank you, Alan and Laura, for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim? I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Yes, sorry. Not feeling well, sorry.
No worries, and I will vote yes. So we are continuing until the 17th. Thank you. Lovely. Okay. We're almost there, everybody. Next item on our agenda is site plan. Nothing for Zero South Washington? So Zero South Washington, this is listed on our agenda. The applicant has requested to continue until October the 10th. We have not opened it at this time, so we'll take them at that point. So now we have SP 20735 for a 280 Newton Avenue. And I'll ask the applicant to introduce themselves and give a quick overview of the project. And I apologize that you were the last on the agenda this evening.
It's okay.
It's okay. Good evening. I'm Peter Baymes, engineering design consultant. I'm joined with Andrew Harrington. He's with Amigo. And our applicant is Autism Resources, Inc. They are the current owner of record from record deed. There has been a merger with Amigo. And that's where we really are with this. So the owner applicant, special permit application, we've got a three acre parcel of land here in Taun, excuse me, Norton, on Taunton Avenue. North is to the top of the sheet. Meadow Brook Lane is a private way. It's going to be to the south. To the east, we've got a wetland system that's about a half an acre, a total of three acres. The current building that's located here, 280, is located in this position here that's shaded. The proposal is to raise that building. That building is currently in the front yard setback. It is used as a group home by, by the owner. And the proposal is to construct a duplex in that position, also to be used for the same purpose for autistic adults. We have provided you with a complete site plan. There's a stormwater management system that's been reviewed by your conservation commission. They've issued a permit for that. There is a collection system that goes through a treatment unit. This is a hydro works unit. Cash basins located here. It'll go through treatment and then be recharged along with roof water. There's also another recharge system here located on the north side of the building that will take care of that aspect of it. We did go to the Board of Health. We tested the soils on site. We've got a soil absorption system that's been approved. It's just pending a licensed installer for installation to have the permit issued. We spoke with your deputy fire chief today, Mr. Robbins. He saw that we had proposed to have fire suppression for the building. I believe he was going to speak to your agent. Did he get to speak with you today? He did, okay. So he was in support of our proposal. For the activities, we're located on about 30,000 square feet here of where we're proposing to do our work. There is a hundred foot buffer zone associated with this wetland. There's about 200 feet between the two. So we're really having a pretty negligible impact on the lot with the, with the proposal. Currently, the site doesn't have a paved road system. We are proposing to pave this driveway. There'll be six parking spaces. And there's three trees associated with the planting of that area. We're maintaining the large street trees that are along the street. And then we're proposing 11 evergreens along our northern boundary to our northern butter. We've completed a boundary survey here. We've located five monuments of record. And those are all indicated on the plan as well. So we've typed that down. You folks are the special permit granting authority. We did reach out to your building inspector. He did confirm that you are the approval authority for this. And we did provide you with seven interests of special permit. I don't know, with the late hour, I don't read them all. But generally speaking, you know, we do meet the community need with our proposal. We are providing a service that is in desperate need. The buildings are in scale and scope within our existing neighborhood. We have very little impact on our property, our three acre property, or on our butter properties. Traffic, we've got circulation through our site. Fire apparatus can easily get into this site and service any needs that could be met with the siting of the building. We have sufficient public utilities and private utilities available for the site. The proposal is within the character of the area. We do provide, again, screening to our butters. We have no impact to the environment. We are infiltrating 100% of our stormwater. There's no impact to your tax base and by constructing new structure, there's value added with the increased tax revenue. And again, overall, no traffic impact, no environmental impact. We did provide you with a complete stormwater calculation. Again, that was provided to your conservation commission. And I do have the record plans of land. This property goes back to 1949 as its first plan of land with the site. And there's been some additional plans done over the years, but that is the boundary for the three acres. So be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, you said Meadow Brook Lane was a private way?
Yes, sir. That's what we have on record.
And the driveway currently shows two curb cuts and one onto that way? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant at this time?
I got one. Curiosity more than anything. The building that's there, when I was looking on the register, is that, that's a significantly older house?
It's old that we didn't find it be listed as any historic structure. I have no record of that.
Okay. When I thought I looked it up, I thought it came up on the register in Massachusetts. Does it sound correct that it was built in 1820? Is it that old?
I believe it's the late 1800s.
That's what the upstairs map says, 1825.
So right now, my, my concern would be about raising a decent condition house that's over 200 years old. That would be, that would be my one concern about this. It could represent a historic loss for the town.
Okay.
That's the only, that's really the only thing I see here that stands out to me.
Okay.
If we could clarify if that's some sort of significance.
I would thought the building inspector might have raised that if there was a demolition delay, but he didn't in my inquiry, but.
You could also contend wooden structure from 1825 is a tinderbox.
Yeah, it doesn't really function well for our use, so the intent here is to do that. But if you've got a historical society, we certainly could make, you know, make some of the materials available. Documentation typically is another means to resolving that, so that they can properly document it. We can, we can reach out to the fire department too if they can do it for exercising.
Safety of the residents currently residing there as opposed to the destruction of the building.
I understand.
From a capacity standpoint, does this represent an increase in capacity on the lot for residents? For residents?
Yes, there would, there would be more capacity on this lot for residents.
From a, do you have a number on that yet, or is it?
So I'm assuming you're talking about current residents that are on site versus what'll be on site when there's a duplex?
Yes.
So it was a children's home before. So the amount of residents in the home could vary, you know, it could go from anywhere from like eight to five to 10. We're going to use it for adult, adults with autism. So each unit will only have five, so there'll be 10 total, so. So I guess, I guess there won't be really an increase. I mean, there could be at some points. Like I said, there could have been five kids there for a few years and then you could have got more kids in.
Do you need me to clarify some questions? So thank you. Do you have additional questions for the applicant from the board? I'll ask if there's anyone joining us on the Zoom meeting virtually. If there's anybody here in person who'd like to ask any questions of the board. Feel free to come up and come to the podium if you'd like. I'll ask you to receive the spot for a second. And if you can just address your comments to the board, if I can answer that, I will. If I ask the applicant to clarify, then I'll do that.
I have some concerns. My name is Ted Marvel. I live at 38 Meadow Brook Lane. Got together with some of the other, my neighbors, they're here tonight. And we came up with some concerns, a list of concerns that we had that we'd like to address. So it was stated and is true that Meadow Brook Lane is a private way. It's not a town road. This is the second time that we've seen this business, because it is a business. Even though we're in a residential, I believe it's R60, that we are zoned. This is a business. This is the second time that they've come before the town to expand their operation. And that's basically what they're doing here is expanding the operation to increase the number of beds. One of the concerns we have is a flow of water, of the drain water. Right now, we have an issue. Do you mind if I use your-
Use the cord.
Thank you. We have an issue right here where the land drops off. Meadow Brook Lane comes down as a hill. All the water from Route 140 this way dumps down that road. We submitted some pictures. Could we, is it possible to bring them up?
I think he's, uh-
So this is looking east on Meadow Brook Road, so heading down the lane.
Yeah.
And right, this is the erosion we got from the last storm we had. It doesn't show up very well, but it's probably almost, it's probably almost a foot deep. And that's coming off of, from Route 140 down. So we're very concerned with the way that they have their parking lot coming out onto Meadow Brook Lane. Because that water will dump here and it'll, it'll come right down the lane. And we can't take any more water on that road. We have this going on. The town does maintain Meadow Brook Lane. It was legislation passed, passed, I believe it was 1966, that allowed them to maintain private ways with public, public way funds. I've been down in a long time, prior to 1966. The neighbors had to pool their money together and they got a local contractor that would come in once a year with a bulldozer and some gravel and raid our road. So the town doesn't come down every week or once a month. It's probably like two or possibly three times a year. So we're stuck with that unless we go up there and we fill it in ourselves, which, which the neighbors do that at times. So we can't take any more water. We, we think that, well, we don't know for sure, but this concerns us with this parking lot coming right out into the road like that. The other thing we're concerned with, with this parking lot is there's six spaces here. The old parking lot that they had is right in this area. On any given day, there would be eight to 10 vehicles in that parking lot. They have two vans, nose to tail, and the cars would do the same thing right on down the line. We've had issues with our meetings or some kind of events that take place here at this business. And there's sometimes 15 plus cars there. So where are they going to park if this is, if this lot is full? We've had in the past where they parked right alongside the road and even just blocked the whole road off. Where we've had to go and knock on the door to ask them to move their vehicles so that we could get out of our road or in our road. And then other times when they do get over far enough where you can squeeze by with a, with a small car, we had to ask them to move so that if there was an emergency down the lane, the fire apparatus would be able to get in there or emergency apparatus or what have you. So that's been an issue. When there's snow removal, they move all the cars out of the parking lot, they put them in our road. And we're trying to get out to go to work in the morning. They're plowing the parking lot. Nobody's around. We bang on the door again, asking them to move. So we just don't know where you're going to put the overflow parking. This is Route 140 this Taunav. So are they going to park them on 140? They really can't park on Meadow Brook Lane. There's just no room to do that. And then this is a private property and another little road just down towards the railroad tracks. So Brian, can you scroll through those pictures easily or? That's just a little further down. Can you keep going? I just want to show where we caught the, in the last storm. This is the old parking lot right here on the left. Route 140 would be right out here by about probably 30 feet. And if you can keep going, you can see there's a lot of water that's coming out of here now and heading down the lane. But I think we have a picture that'll actually show the, yeah, right here. You can see the water, the way it's flowing. It's heading right down, heading right down the lane. When they have deliveries that I've done, they have some pretty large trucks that come in and make deliveries. That's been an issue. The trucks are parked out into the lane. And we've actually had to sit there and wait for them to make their deliveries before we could get out of the lane. Brian, could you go into the plans? It doesn't matter which one's first.
The, the plan that's uneasy, you mean?
No, I have a couple of plans that I want to make a point about.
We'll do a map.
Yes.
You're sharing them now.
Okay, so this plan is the land that is directly across Meadow Brook Lane from Autism Resources land. That would be up at the top there. This right of way, that is Meadow Brook Lane. And one thing I want to note here is that this gentleman's land right here, the bounds go right across Meadow Brook Lane at the end. It's one of the only pieces of land on Meadow Brook Lane where the bounds go across the way. So if they do any construction on Meadow Brook Lane, they're actually on this guy's private property. So then we have right of way because, you know, it's been used for so long. But this gets a little messy at the end of this private way because of this. All the other deeds for that, for the lane, if you could show me the next picture, I can explain what it, what happens on most of the other parcels of land on Meadow Brook Lane. They actually will come to either the southerly side of the road or the northerly side. So north, north is up. So this piece of land right here and this one as well, this is typical of the other lots that are down there. The lot lines go right to the, in this case, it would be the south side of the lane. They don't cross over like they do at that very end piece. So it's not as, I don't know what I want to say, but just to show that where the lot lines are at the end, that, that piece at the end of the road, it'll actually be on private property doing any work on Meadow, Meadow Brook Lane. Meadow Brook Lane is a dirt road, as you can see. It's variable width, starts out at about 20 feet and in some places it goes down to like 12 feet. So it's variable width all the way down. Over time, it's gotten wider because when the town started grading it, over time, it just made it wider. When I was a little kid, you went down here, it was a, it was a dirt road with two wheel tracks in it. You didn't ride down there. You didn't drive down there during mud season. You didn't drive down there when it snowed. You walked in from the end of the road. The mailboxes were all at the end of the road. That's where you got your mail. And that's the way it used to be. I heard some talk about the age of the building that's there now that they plan to take down. There was a document that I saw on the, in the folder for this meeting today that said that the the building was on some historical register or something like that through the state. Is that correct, Brian?
I can pull it up.
That's what I was referencing.
I'm sorry?
That's what I was referencing.
Okay. I couldn't really hear what you said. I have very bad tinnitus and I was trying to hear what you were saying, but couldn't really hear what you're saying. Okay, so you, so the board didn't get to see that?
It's in the paperwork, yeah.
Yeah.
Year constructed 1820.
This is what it used to look like. It doesn't look like this anymore, but one of the boxes where the, that's what it used to look like, but yeah. 1820 of the year constructed and if you scan, if you go down, it says something-
I was reviewing it today, so.
Historical record or something like that.
Yeah, you've come in there today.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great.
Discussion for 1:30.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry.
Did you have any further questions or topics?
Just some, something, some things I noticed on the plan. Down in this little box, it references that debris is to be removed from Cherry Street and Autumn Hill Road. I just don't know where those are. I don't believe they're in our neighborhood. I don't know if that's a typo or something that was cut and pasted, but that's in-
Through the jitter, that, that, that just got cut and paste. He just didn't make the edits.
Okay.
It's just a standard note to, to make sure that things are done properly. Just didn't have the right address.
So with those, with those concerns, I mean, we just don't think that this serves the town in any positive way. Certainly does not serve our neighborhood in any positive way for the concerns- Certainly does not serve our neighborhood in any positive way for the concerns around the traffic, the water runoff, all of those things. And we oppose it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board, and I wanna thank you all for your service. You really earned me the money tonight. I hope they're paying you a good overtime rate.
Double zero is still zero.
Yes. Well, thank you for your time, I know what it's like serving on a board. I, I do in a private club, I don't in the, in the town, but I know that it's, uh, it's demanding at times. It's thankless job at times, so thank you very much for your time and care and our concerns.
So, I can answer the questions if you wanna go up to the public first.
If you wanna, if you wanna comment, that's fine. I think that
Be quick about it.
The first question was just in terms of overall zoning, and I think that you meet that based on the use.
Oh, absolutely.
In terms of the question of parking, I think you do meet the, the number.
I just was gonna go through all of that.
Yeah, cause I think if they're each supposed to be five and you have to have 1.75, that's the number. So, you meet the number, but if you are planning to have 10 people in six spots, I'm not sure if there are parking plans within duplex or garages or anything.
Yeah, I just wanted to say first, I'm, I'm sorry that that happened here on the road. If we are allowed to do this, I, I would try to make sure that doesn't happen again. You know, we've, we've grown significantly in size because the need, our needs, the need for care of people with autism has increased over time, and I think that there were growing pains, so, um, you know, I guess you'd have to take my word for it, but I, I would try to work through those issues. I, I don't think you should have to experience that. I, I wouldn't tolerate that myself, you know, so I, I understand. We will have two vans at this spot for the clients, none of our clients drive. The only other cars on site will be the staff. And the ratio of staff for adults is less than for the children, so I think we'll be in better shape there in terms of the cars. I think that the deliveries that you saw probably were mainly focused, and I'm just guessing, so, um, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but it may have been around COVID. We were delivering our own groceries, um, because we were, we were worried about exposure in supermarkets and stuff like that. So, I think we did have a lot of trucks running around and, and it was a mess, you know, so, um, yeah, so I, I just said, sorry about that.
Yeah, what I was gonna add is that this is really where the design comes in, is that the, there is a parking lot here off of Meadow and we just thought it was inappropriate. So, we've taken a different approach to this. This is actually the high point, so all of our stormwater stays on site. So, so the water's contention that they were gonna somehow impact Meadowbrook Lane with stormwater is unfounded. This, this is the low spot, we're picking up all the water on site, zero water leaves a site. Your conservation agent has already reviewed this and approved it.
Yeah, but from a look on the plan perspective, driveway going into a, going into a hill, it makes sense from the, from the abutter's perspective to.
Be concerned about it, sure, but I'm saying it's been addressed, most importantly. And then, and then even more importantly is that we're discharging on our own property. The, the, the thing that they don't understand is this is a very awkward way and it is actually going over this property. It's, it should be actually to the south. It, it's just through, you know, attrition, that's where it is. And unfortunately, and we've noted that, you know, with, with our survey work here, we're tying into the edge of our own travelway, which is where they actually drive, that, that the right of way itself should actually be 25 feet to the south. So, so all I would say is that right now, we're not suggesting that we move Meadowbrook Lane, I don't wanna start getting into that with anyone. They can certainly continue to pass and repass what they have been, but they're actually coming onto this property in burdening easily further than they do.
Okay.
I'm just saying for the record, we, we, we're right on our property, we are not in that way. So, I'm just being honest with you, this is the boundary of the way.
The existing way does not match, so what you're stating is that the, the way that is shown on the historic maps does not match up entirely with the way that is in place today. It's shifted by 20 feet north.
And, and then any contention about what's happening further to the east on the way is a no consequence to us. There, there were proposals to, to, to do lots of things with this property over time. You may have seen some of them if you've been on the board a long time. It would have had like a two acre impact and they were gonna do things on Meadowbrook Lane. We're eliminating all of that. This is the proposal right here at the, at the confluence with Taunton Avenue. We come in off of Taunton Avenue. I, I, I spoke with Andy, we, we could just circle back out on the Taunton Avenue again, but it would be inappropriate to have two road systems next to each other, our driveway and a street. So, that's why we're entering here and exiting here. I would not change that as a designer. So, so the focus is high point here, stormwater stays on our site.
From a.
I wouldn't characterize this as a business, this, this is their, this is their homes. I, I know that they may see it that way, but this is, the people who live there, this is their home, and, and that's where they live. That parking lot is eliminated. Deliveries will all be on site, there's no deliveries because I think that's where the contention is, is that this parking lot overlaps Meadowbrook, we're eliminating it. And no construction on Meadowbrook. And then the point about the historical register, again, I, you know, in, in dealing with your building inspector, he didn't even mention a demolition delay for this building. He knew exactly what our proposal was, so I, I.
I don't know if it's in his purview
Okay.
to protect historic buildings, but just to require their safety.
Okay.
From a, yeah.
So, again, I, my, my, my offer would be that we could reach out to your historical society, any, any documentation, any benefits, any values that they could derive from the facility before demolition, we would certainly engage them for that. And that can be a condition, but I, I just don't think there's a reason to withhold the special permit because of that.
Building's been modified pretty heavily over time, it's been added on to a few times. I think, I think if it was a, if it was a historically registered, we probably wouldn't have been able to do those additions, but just guessing.
You're assuming that things run on. I know we, we touched on the parking a little bit, from a grading perspective on the site, are we planning to have elevated curbs along the driveway? And if there is a need for overflow parking, is there the ability to do that on the site with the current design? Either at the north of the site or the there?
Yes, so, so we did propose a Cape Cod burn along this edge because we don't want that storm, that's our storm, that's, that's my gutter. But there is the ability to be along this side and honestly, we, we, we just thought it would be nice to have this division, but if, if someone's concerned about added parking, I'll just take this out and we, we could make that a condition, we'll have seven parking spaces. Gives us a little bit more room. And there's certainly the ability to park on that side, so that would be the one change I could make as a designer without much impact. Our stormwater system is designed for a hundred year storm event.
How wide is the driveway? And it's standard?
Yes, so I wanna say we were 22, um, we made it for fire apparatus because we wanted all the churning radii and then a full, full size parking space.
In theory, you could have somebody parking along the side and somebody else could get by.
Yes, sir, yes. I anticipate a one-way travel through this for the most part.
I would assume.
We'll enter from here and exit.
That would be my assumption as well, yeah.
That's why we put the angle parking in. It's not restricted to one way.
I have another question. They had mentioned that there were meetings occasionally, does, does the group, does the home host, uh, like assemblies at any point or how frequently?
So, I would say it's not typical for us to host an assembly at an adult group home.
Sure.
Like, we have so many group homes now that there's other homes that where we have our events, like we have three, they have programs, and one of them's in Albro right, right down the street, so that's where most of our events are. I, I don't know if the events that were happening were, were happening here because it was a larger place where would have perceived larger parking lot. And why it wasn't here at that point, but, um, but yeah, there, there's not typically
Okay.
gatherings. In fact, I would say that our adult clients sometimes don't, it doesn't go well, so we, you know, there are some houses that have like occasional cookouts, but it, it's far and few in between. And if, I guess, uh.
I don't think that's any different than a normal residential use, having an occasional, yeah.
And I, and I think, I think that I would be, you know, after hearing some of the concerns, which I, I was unaware of, I, I would be happy for you guys to have my number too, I'm, I'm pretty much on call 24/7, so, you know.
Okay. Additional questions for the applicants at this time?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow Ted. And I know there's people after me, oh, I'm sorry, applicant, yes, sorry.
If you can just come up to the podium and just introduce yourself.
Absolutely.
You're gonna speak, you're gonna be on the record, sorry.
Not a problem. James Haven's 20 Meadowbrook Lane. So, it's, you know, Ted brought up about some of the deliveries that, or like the meetings that might take place there. You are correct, that I remember back during COVID, you had P-Pod, you had UPS, stuff like that, like a lot of people were having. So, I can see how that definitely would be reduced.
I'm just gonna ask you to address comments to, to the board.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think anybody's getting into a few good men cross, cross examination here, but just, it's.
No, I was just affirming that he was correct and, you know, that was definitely what the case was for most of those deliveries. Uh, the, the meetings themselves, when they do occur, uh, it wa, it was a good number. I don't remember the frequency, but it was at least, I'd say a couple, several times, maybe more per year that you would have a good amount of cars there. And it looked more like it was a meeting for, uh, the people that were actually there taking care of the patients and, or the children in that case. And, you know, that, that brought me to a couple of my other questions. You know, to me, it seems more of a, um, you know, it, it is a service to our community for people that do, you know, have to live with autism. And, but it still strikes me similar to like a, say a JRC where you are providing, you know, to these, um, patients, if you will. You know, they're not moving there per se, they live there with, you know, that's their new residence and home, you know, that they'll sign in for forever or whatever the case might be. And, you know, so it still strikes us, you know, within that vein of it. And I know in times, they did have some of the older, um, young adults actually end up wandering off from the yard and they were able to catch them just down the Meadowbrook. So, you know, there is the potential now that, you know, it's obviously adults, that they could wander down further, you know, right into all the yards and knowing, cause and the reason I raised JRC is my father-in-law, he worked there for many, many years. And I know sometimes it can be difficult and very challenging, you know, with people that have special needs or aren't clear on what's happening. And, you know, you can get into a very physical, difficult situation in those scenarios. And it's a lot because they're frightened, you know, they don't know what's going on. And, you know, like not really sure what contingencies are there. And that, you know, brings me into where it was mentioned, um, a lighter staff needed versus the children. Like, how many do you need when you have 10 patients that are on site? You know, so that's one question, still didn't hear the exact number on that, so.
I don't think it was provided. I, I'm not sure. I don't know how to run a care home, so I'm, and it's not the board's place to enforce a staffing level.
Right. Again, I'm just inquiring to what is the regulation around that? I mean, I'm sure it's pretty clear cut. I'm sure it's, this is what the requirement is, say, in state of Massachusetts, or I don't know if it's by county.
I mean, if that's, I would, from a board's perspective, I would say that's between the applicant, whatever state licensee agency they work with. If, um, the applicant wants to talk to you about those regulations outside of this meeting, that's their purview.
Got it, okay. And then, uh, you know, final mention with the traffic there, when you're looking at new, it's actually 140, but new Taunton Ave, you have old Taunton Ave, which is immediately to the right when you come in, and then you have Meadowbrook right there. So, I mean, you do end up with, it can be challenging getting in and out of that area depending on what the volume is. Overall during the day, obviously now, because it's been quite a while, that there hasn't been any activity up there. It's, you know, not that bad now. Occasionally, you might end up, you know, with other people coming in and out, which you can only fit one car one way. So, we already have that, and then people are waiting up there for someone to egress out of Meadowbrook very often. So, you have, you know, that aspect of it. And just curious, like looking at the plan, I know for a lot of us, we're wondering, you know, it, was there any way to design it so versus dumping out towards Meadowbrook or old Taunton Ave? If there was a way to just kind of loop it around so you're just to basically half circle it, it's going right back out?
I think from a traffic engineer perspective, having that many curb cuts in succession is not considered a best practice.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was at least posed or asked.
Yeah, I think that was one of the things that the engineer mentioned that they looked at, but having kind of boom, 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 is generally not what traffic engineers wanna see.
Right. And, I mean, and that's it, I definitely won't keep us, I just wanted to build that a little bit to like what Ted had already mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Good evening Chairman and Board, my name's John Rego, I represent Zachary Pike on 266.
Seven six.
Company in Taunton Avenue. Uh, thank you for having us. We would, uh, Mr. Pike shares the concerns of his neighbors, including the loss of a historical property in the neighborhood. Uh, my client, however, has an additional issue that's unique to him. He lives right here along this line, uh, above the property. Now, this right here on the plan is, runs right through his yard as it exists today. There is a fence, this, there is a fence separating these two properties, but the fence is along this line right here. Now, um, this strip of land is roughly 30 feet by 100 feet, that's give or take. Um, and it's been maintained, uh, it's been maintained actively for the past five years by my client and before that by prior owners for at least 20 years. Now, we're in the process of investigating the prior owners, um, but this looks like a clear case for adverse possession. So, we are moving forward with that. Now, if that strip of land returns to my client, well, it is his now as we speak, but if, if that, if this plan is built, that, that is right up to the property line as it stands today. I, I understand the, um, the survey shows the line up there, but, um, it's not how it exists today.
That's correct, yeah, yeah, yep. So, we've maintained that, we've got, uh, the guy, all the neighbors in the area have attested that the, it's been maintained by the 276 property for over 20 years.
Over 20 years, and I do have the names of the prior owners, we have reached out to them. You know, and if, if the court finds in my client's favor, uh, that property could actually touch the, the boundary line. So, at this point in time, I, we strenuously oppose this project.
So, from a procedural standpoint, the applicant's presented a plot where they are the deed and owner of the land, and they're proposing a special permit on that. Should the board approve that and then move forward, I assume that you would appeal that and include this together. And if you were successful, the applicant would come back and modify whatever permit they got from us?
Yes.
So, is there, so, we can't speculate what your, what the future, any adverse possession discussion would take place. So, is there, obviously you would like that, you would like it to be done as quickly and as efficiently as possible.
Yeah.
But does that preclude us moving forward with this plan as submitted?
Well, we, we think, yeah, we think so. We think that, um, proceeding with the plan could, would cause, uh, if my client succeed on the adverse possession, it would cause headaches for everybody, including the town. Just, just as a matter of, um, what do you do then?
As an abutter, he's entitled to appeal the special permit decision and it would go through the legal process that way. Would it cause more paperwork? Absolutely. But from the applicant's perspective, they feel they own the land, they're proposing a project on the land? And.
As an aside, kind of related to that, um, my client would like to find. As an aside, kind of related to that, my client would like to find out if we are actually on the abutters list, because he didn't receive, receive notice. Is there?
Uh, we can confirm that, that's a list that's pulled from the assessors at the post office, correct, Brian?
Assessors, and then I have letters.
Okay, if we can confirm that that they received one, obviously not this evening, but as part of the process. But obviously, if they're, if they're the direct next lot, then clearly they should be, should have been on the abutters list.
Yes. And I, and I just would like to just point out that my client has owned this property for five years, and it was his belief the whole time that this was his yard, and there's a fence separating it, he has property on the yard, so.
That's what title insurance is for.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna move forward with the lawsuit, and so holding, yeah, if we can put a hold on there.
Yeah, I mean.
Any projects that are happening until that motion is.
The applicant's presented a plan, we'll rule on the plan, as an abutter, you're entitled to appeal that special permit decision.
Thank you, perfect.
Appreciate it.
Oh, is there anything, I'm not sure if that's something that you have discussed prior, or that you would like to speak to in any way, other than.
Surprised at, at, at the contention, but, you know, we, we believe we have got good title, I've got record plans, I've got records that refute what they're saying, so I'm, I'm fine, I mean, I've lived it for five years, but prior to five years, I'm pretty confident that we have the right documentation. So I would ask the board just to move forward with our application.
Understanding that you'll be having to pull those records again in the future.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. It's two meetings in a row for you, right?
You guys are in my backyard, so. So, Luca Shray, I live at two seventy-six Taunton Ave in the rear, so I own this property in the back here, so. You know, while you guys are on the subject of Mr. Pike's property, you know, I just want to reiterate, I grew up across the street in two sixty-nine Taunton Ave, that's where I was, you know, grew up my whole life, I've been here forty-five years. This property that Mr. Pike owns now, used to be owned by Mr. LaCombe. That fence that divides Mr. Pike's yard has been there for, you know, over forty years, older than me. So if this does go through, then this property's not going to meet the required setbacks, you know, I understand.
Then he'll have to modify it and do whatever he needs to.
The other quest, the other thing, the other concerns I have, and a lot of the neighbors have the same concerns, is the existing house is a five-bedroom, two-bath. These duplexes, I saw the plan, but I don't see how many bedrooms are.
They, they stated that they're planning for five units each, so ten units total.
Ten bedrooms, so just so, you know, the board understands what, you know, the neighbors have dealt with. You know, I bought my house, you know, eighteen years ago, I grew up across the street, so I've been in that neighborhood for over forty years. You know, four separate incidences, I can recall, the, this home, you know, it's the Amigo, I think it's Amigo Corporation. You know, they, they house the autistic people, it, we haven't seen anybody there in almost a year. But prior to that, you know, over the years, there's been, you know, upwards of thirty people in this, in this house at one time, I've seen. You know, the, the yard's been full of people, it's a madhouse. People have walked across the street, they've walked in Mr. LaCombe's house, right in his front door, right out his back door. The neighbors that, Mr. Pike bought the house off, the Sullivans, they, they moved out of this house for, for that reason. People are running around the yard naked, they're in the windows naked, it was, it was complete madhouse, it was completely out of control. I got a call, you know, maybe like eight years ago, ten years ago, from my wife saying, there was somebody looking in our windows, and I was halfway home. She's freaking out, I had young kids at the time, so I come flying down the driveway, see some guy running up the driveway, so I kind of veered off and got out of the car, tackled him, and didn't know what the hell was going on, I just know some guy's looking in my window. And I got kids in the house, in the wife's house, so when I did realize, you know, he was special needs, obviously, you know, I tried helping him up, I wiped him off, the guy was freaking out, so I walked him, I tried walking him down one forty to Autism Resources, the Amigo Home. Got there, it was a complete madhouse, there was no fence at the time, they put a fence up. So I was trying to look for a manager, I ended up walking in the house, looking for a manager, I couldn't speak to nobody. There's a lot of special needs people in this property, so I end up just walking in, you know, just looking around. Fifteen people in a living room, ten people sitting on top of, on a couch, nobody's in charge. Finally, I find some guy sitting in a room by himself, playing on his computer. Now, I can't speak for the new management if this has changed, but this is what I dealt with personally as a neighbor. So, you know, I asked the neighbor, I said, what's going on in here, you guys need to control, you know, this is, this is our control, you know, it's happening every, and mostly during the summer, and they'd have big, you know, big events, ten, fifteen, twenty people running around the yard, you know, there's a swing set there, it's, it is crazy, it's, you know, guys running around naked, and Mr. Pike can, you know, contest to that, you know, what happened this past summer, you know, the last time they were, there was a guy running around the yard naked. I'm in the middle of talking to the manager, same guy I just tackled in my yard, runs down the street, runs back to my yard, we find him in my dumpster. He's looking through my dumpster. So I went down to Autism Resources in Mansfield, spoke to management down there, told them my concerns, told my neighbors' concerns. You know, this has been going on for years, we filed police reports, there's, there's several police reports at the Norton Police Station for the issues we've had with this house. We haven't seen anybody in the last, you know, I'd say probably eight to ten months. You know, but those are the issues that I personally dealt with, my previous neighbors dealt with, Mr. Pike's dealt with my father, my grandparents before that, Mr. LaCombe lives across the street now, we've all dealt with these issues. You know, the other issue was, you know, and it's relevant to this, I'm guessing, but, you know, back in oh-eight, they tried to put up another home right here. I tried to get a variance, because they didn't have the backland, they had the frontage, but they didn't have the backland. The property markers were not accurate, so I had Otis Dyer draw up, do a survey of my property. The plan that they submitted back in oh-eight, it didn't show the proper boundaries. So I had Otis Dyer come in, do a full survey, he ended up redrawing the lines, I also had a wetland scientist come in and, you know, remark the wetlands. This is my gravel path, which actually is on their property, but it's deeded to this, deeded to my property over a hundred years ago. So that's a right-of-way that, you know, I used to go to Meadowbrook. They were trying to build on, they were trying to put a ten-bedroom house here in oh-eight, which we ended up getting, it ended up getting, you know, I think, I forget the guy's name, he used to work for Ray Hebert, you know, he ended up, he ended up, you know, removing it because of the issues. This marker right here, I know for a fact, was just put in a week ago, that wasn't there a week ago, because I saw the guys out in my yard doing the surveying. I asked them what they were doing, I figured, you know, Amigo was looking to do something again. So this marker was just popped in the ground as of a week ago, because I saw the new stake, the guy was dragging it in. You know, other than that, I mean, this is all wetlands here, and, you know, Mr. Marvel was talking about the water runoff, I mean, the road is terrible. It's terrible, there's always huge divots, there's always a ton of runoff, there's a, there's a ton of, this is all swamp, my backyard is all swamp, it's ten acres of swamp. So, you know, but Meadowbrook Lane is a mess, it's always huge divots, the snow's a mess. You know, we had a tree fall down in the lanes, and then, you know, people cutting through the yard, and so I was looking through the yard, because it's so congested. Even the winter, you can't, you cannot travel down Meadowbrook with two cars, so a lot of people will pull over into this area at Autism Resources, and, you know, just wait for somebody to go by, so. But, you know, my biggest concern is, is the safety issue with the neighbors, now you're adding ten bedrooms, you know, you go from a five-bedroom to a two-bedroom, to ten bedrooms, you know, these, they were sticking twenty people in the five-bedroom house with no oversight, no management. Now you're gonna add another five bedrooms, I mean, the place is gonna be a zebra, so.
They have stated that the use would be changed from children to adults.
It's been adults.
It's been adults.
Right.
It's always been adults, there's never been children, it's always been adults.
He was young, he was young man.
Not the guy I attacked.
Young man.
It's always been, it's always been adults, it's never been young kids, never. We see guys on the swings out there, and they're all forty, fifty-year-old men, so there's never been kids in that area. And I can tell you, I've caught him in my yard on numerous occasions, my father's caught him, I mean, they've been walking on one forty, Route one forty. No oversight, no management, nobody there to speak to, you go knock on the door, there's nobody to talk to. It's just a bunch of unsupervised, you know, special needs folks that shouldn't, you know, shouldn't be left alone. And then they put up a new fence to, because they were jumping over the old, you know, it was a little fence, it was, you know. This fence here, that Mr. Pike has, has been there for over fifty years, it's older than me, so he's been maintaining that property for, you know, the time he owned it. And two previous owners before him maintained it. So I just take into consideration, the board takes into consideration the safety issues, you know, that us neighbors deal with, that this property is on, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Eric. Any additional members of the public who wanted to speak? Okay.
I just wanted to, just for the record, that this is a nineteen ninety-seven plan of land for the property.
Sure.
I'm just saying, it does, does show the monuments that we, that I discussed with you earlier, and the gentleman is right, this point was reset, my son actually reset it because it was pulled. When we first came out and surveyed, it was here, the issue that we picked up when we were there, because we were looking at this barn, is that it's probably too close to the side here, it's up there. That's just another matter, I'm just saying to you that we put this back.
It's actually, I had that surveyed by Ram, so.
We, we put this back.
Go ahead, set that, that building.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we put this point back, because we wanted to preserve our boundary, that, that was a point we found when we first surveyed, it was gone when we went back. We put it back again, because it's our monument, just as much as it's our abutters monument, it's our monument too.
Okay.
The transgressions that he's described, I have no response, other than management takes care of this stuff, and they'll do a better job, obviously, because of the points information. We'll take that back to his office, I would like our application to go forward, thank you.
Do we have additional questions, comments for the applicant at this time?
Yeah, I'm not voting on anything right now. That's my comment.
So you don't, you are not comfortable voting at this time? So you would be.
It's too late, we got additional info today in the box that I never even looked at, so it's a sore thing, someone's gonna look into.
Is it okay to?
I'm too late to digest any more information, I've been up since four, I don't, I'm not voting on anything right now.
Okay.
You can, but I'm not.
Okay. Speaking to the applicant, are you amenable to a continuance to our next meeting October the tenth?
Sure.
Does that mean with, continuing to the tenth?
As long as it's gonna be something else.
Will it give us additional time to review the materials that you have and think?
I mean, need something on this historical, we put that in the Dropbox, where did that come from?
It came from an abuttery. I also believe I have an email from where the attachment came from.
Okay. So that would be at least one point that we can review and confirm, and potentially share with the Historic Society, and see if there's anything to add to that point of the discussion. Again, this is a special permit, so. So there's a proposal to continue to October the tenth. Is there a motion to that effect, or would people like to motion to close the public hearing and move forward with the sub bill?
I'll, I'll make a motion to continue to the tenth.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue to our next meeting October the tenth, to provide additional time for research, reflection, and sleep. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor, please, I'll go through the roll again, apologies, Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we are continued. Thank you very much, gentlemen, I do thank you very much, you're the. Prior to the motion to adjourn, I will pass around one bill, if anybody wants to look at a fifty-dollar bill for envelopes.
Give those.
Please feel free, otherwise, there was a motion to adjourn.
The surfer discussion?
Surfer discussion is continued as the gathering's.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn.